Good evening and welcome to the Planning Board meeting at Ashland Town Hall. It is currently 7:20 and we call the meeting to order. The slight change to the agenda, the first item on the agenda will be an A and R for 151 High Street.
That's correct, and I believe we have a representative from GLM Engineering who's going to give it to us in a nutshell.
Do it from here or on the desk?
All right.
Microphone would be great, please.
So, my name is Dana Ross and I am with GLM Engineering and I am representing the project on High Street in Ashland, number 151 and 153. Note that Lot 153 is an existing lot that is used serviced by that existing way that's shown. And we are subdividing the property that was number 151 into two lots, Lot 2 and Parcel A. Parcel A is not to be considered a buildable lot and is created for a future conveyance. Do we have any questions?
On the plan, it shows that as an existing way. Are you su-- are we sure that that's a road or as opposed to a driveway?
It's a record way that was created for Lot 153. It's a record way that's indeed.
Is it on a subdivision plan that's been recorded?
Yes, it is.
Do you cite it on there?
It's, yeah. It's listed in the plan, I couldn't tell you which one exactly it is, but it's listed in all the plan references. We could get that to you guys if you'd like to see it.
I just want to be sure that in our approving the new lot line here, that we don't end up creating a way that wasn't already a way as opposed to a driveway. That would be my concern, I want to be sure of that before I sign anything.
Okay. Do you need further documentation before you guys endorse a plan or?
Yeah.
So, should we come back to another meeting with some proof?
Yes.
Deeds and plans?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions while I'm here tonight or?
I don't see any reason that we wouldn't approve this if that issue were properly documented.
Okay, thank you. Is that all?
Yes, that's it.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, do you want to just contact Nat to get back on the agenda?
Sure.
Okay, you have the proper documentation.
The other option would be for this plan not to, the plan that we signed not to reference whether it's a way or a driveway and just leave that ambiguous so that anybody who was concerned about that would have to go back to the other plan. And then this A and R wouldn't have any bearing either way on that unless council disagrees that that would be acceptable.
Well, without it being a way, it wouldn't be, the unit, Lot 1, wouldn't be a buildable lot. So, you would need to indicate that.
Oh, okay.
Might be better to have the information.
Okay.
Right, thank you.
Who is the owner of the land before you go?
Mr. Burke.
Is it Brendan Burke?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Let's move into Centaurus. I would think you wouldn't have to show up in person if we had the proper documentation on that issue.
Okay, we can provide the documents.
Yeah, we've done a number of A and Rs without having somebody have to be here in person. As long as there aren't any questions.
All right.
All right, the next item on today's agenda is a scenic, it is not, is a site plan review for Centaurus Solar.
Right, so at the conclusion of the last meeting, it seemed like most of the questions from the planning board were resolved. I did recently get, in fact, just a couple hours ago, I got a response to the peer review which I'd be happy to share with you now. I know the applicant is prepared to present on that. And any other final pieces of information that you might need?
I've got to recuse, I'm going to butter.
Just as a point of order, this is a site plan review, not a special permit, so they require three affirmative votes in order to move forward with that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, for the record, I'm Tom Hughes with Hughes Environmental Consulting. Steve Sawyer, the project engineer, couldn't attend tonight, so he asked me to come in his absence. We do have Chris Ryan from Design Consultants who's here for any of the engineering questions that may come up. We also have Jordan Bellnapp from Loadstar. After the last hearing, the folks from Loadstar, Jordan submitted some information to follow up to some of the business end questions and some of the technical questions related to the array itself, I believe with the staff. And we received a copy of the peer review on Monday. Steve Sawyer did a preliminary addressing of that before the conservation hearing which was held on Monday and provided you with a written response to those comments that's more comprehensive dealing with the broader issues that conservation didn't have to worry about. Most notably, there were some comments with regards to stormwater and floodplain. Those were both fairly easily addressed by Steve prior to the Conservation Commission hearing. The commission closed the hearing on Monday night. The other sort of notable comment was the comment about turning a fire apparatus around. And so Steve has made a minor change to the plan. He's essentially extended this and worked a little bit with a couple of the turning radiuses to make sure that 30-foot truck can get down there. He spoke with Captain, is it Robie or Robbie?
Robie.
Robie of the Fire Department who seemed satisfied with that. So, we've made some minor adjustments there. There's some other follow-up items in the peer review comment that we believe are more appropriate to deal with sort of at the time of applying for a building permit, things like wiring diagrams. And there's a requirement for a surety bond. We believe that also is something that can be conditioned sort of prior to pulling the building permit. We certainly don't have any objection to providing that. I certainly could answer any questions you have if you have any with relation to the wetland issues. I can touch on stormwater issues or if you have specific questions, we've got Chris Ryan and Jordan here to address those.
So, I'll wait for Nat to come back, this is the first time I've actually seen the peer review documented in full. Were we going to go over the peer review and you comment?
Yeah, we can go over the peer review and the comments.
Okay, so there's three.
And then. Yeah, I was just looking for the peer review comments.
You said that you made some changes to the road for fire access and that you had a verbal response from the Fire Department. Will you be able to provide a letter from the Fire Department?
I would think that could be done. I mean, the conversation is documented in Steve Sawyer's letter that he spoke with Captain Robie and actually in the first response there, general comment number one. It's based on a follow-up telephone conversation, November 12th with Catherine. The, based on a follow-up telephone conversation, November 12th with Captain Robie of the Ashland Fire Department. And we certainly could ask him for an email or a letter. I'm just not sure if that's absolutely necessary that we can do that.
Normally it would be a good thing to have it in writing from the Fire Department.
Right.
Just, just to confirm.
Right, I mean, that's something I think, again, we, that could be conditioned as.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be perfectly happy saying that that's a condition, that you have to have that before proceeding with the building permit.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
So, just to solidify the wording, we're talking about accommodating fire apparatus on-site?
Yes, a, a letter that the Fire Department is, is satisfied with the design for accommodating emergency vehicles.
Yep.
Prior to the issuance of a building permit.
Or a land disturbance.
Yeah, sure.
So, a letter that the Fire Department is satisfied with the design
Mm-hmm.
for accommodating emergency vehicles?
Right.
For accommodating emergency vehicles? And, and, and how does land?
Oh, prior to the, prior to any excavation or building permit whichever first occurs.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I know that there was another condition that was discussed regarding a decommissioning plan.
Right.
Right? And so, I'm wondering if we could just briefly discuss how we'd like to go about getting a decommissioning plan put together, pulled together? And is there, Lisa, I'm wondering if you might be able to, to provide some input? Is there, is there a surety that's, that's normally associated with a decommissioning plan?
Right, well, it's, it's a bond, so it's 8.3%, 10.3% of the bylaw. And so they're required to put up no more than 125% of the cost of removal. So the first thing the town would need is an estimate of the removal costs. And you would take the inflation index on it presuming it's, what, 20, 25 years, right? And then you'd have to discuss the cost of that bond. So, do you have any idea about how you might want to do that?
Sure, so, so my name's Jordan Bellnapp.
Can I try to talk into the microphone? Thank you.
You know, we can certainly, we can get a quote for, for removal of a system in pre- present day, essentially. And also I would, I would offer that we sh- we could propose that we could subtract the scrap value of the system. There's a lot of steel out there. It's worth something. So, it's actually, you can argue it's very close to what it would cost to remove the system, pull the steel out of the ground and, you know, decommission the site, so.
So this is, the, the board, what they, what they proposed in the beginning of their presentation is that prior to the issuance of a building permit, that they come in and come back to you and say, here's what we're proposing. So you condition it in that regard. It's on private property and I think the board has whatever flexibility they want with regard to this. It's not like it's a system that's on public property that you need to make sure absolutely is removed. The bylaw requires you to have it in the event everybody goes south and you have this system out there that doesn't work. So, I think that would, it would be up to the board. I think you definitely want to have an estimate by a certified estimator that says that this is what the va- you know, this is what the cost to remove the system in 20 years. And then they can throw in the, the scrap value and then you can decide how you want to handle it.
I would agree.
So how do you want to condition that?
I, I've never been particularly excited about this clause in the zoning personally because we don't require surety for removal of anything else that is built that is unique to solar. You know, I would love to have had this for Cadillac Paint that they had to be able to tear it down afterwards, you know. But, you know, we just don't do that.
And, and that's why I think, given the fact that it's on private property, typically these are more appropriate for systems that are being built on public property.
Uh, you know, the.
So I think you have more flexibility.
The, the concern would be that if it were truly abandoned, that it could be a attractive nuisance.
Right.
Or otherwise be a hazard.
Right.
Uh, I, I see it very unlikely that it would be abandoned because, you know, as long as it's producing some electricity, there's value there, even if it's not a lot, but.
So I think that they can propose something to you and a condition and then you can have them come back in and you can decide what to do.
And it's still, I mean, you still got the, it's private property, you got the land value. So that would just be taken off if they were say, it, the land just goes down in value if it's going to cost someone the next person that buys it, you know. It just would, it would just be reflected in the value of the land probably that you gotta take all that off before you redevelop it. So it's really not that big of a risk if, you know, it's on private property.
Well, what would be the procedure if they totally abandoned it? Would the town have the right to pay for the removal of the system with this, with that surety?
With the surety, you would, you would call on the surety and the surety would pay for the removal of the system, yes. And, and.
But, but would it be entirely?
You can't entirely waive it because it says shall here.
But with, with it being private property, would the town have the legal right to do that?
Yes, because it'll be a condition of the permit.
Okay.
So you, it, it, it doesn't say, it just says not to exceed 125%, but you have to have something because it says shall. So, you've got, you've got a wide, you know, spans here. So if they provide to you.
An estimate.
An estimate that says it's worth, you know, 50 thou- how, how big a system is this, two and a half megawatts?
Yes.
So, it's worth $100,000 at the end, but the scrap value's worth $99,000. You can decide what kind of surety you want to get.
Okay.
And I, I believe the, the requirement is that it be prepared by an engineer, I think in the.
Correct.
In the bylaw. And Steve Sawyer is actually halfway through preparing one. So, we're confident we can give you something that has, you know, dotsy I's and crosses the T's. But I do agree with you, it's kind of, you think of all of the things that get built that don't have any kind of decommissioning, you know. We've run into it before frankly and I, I wonder myself what, what makes solar special that requires this. I, I can understand if it's in a public way and it's visible and, and the, and the town doesn't want the eyesore, but this project's com- you know, completely encircled by trees. It's not visible.
I think that the model by, it's the state model bylaw that has the provision. And I think that it, when the state model bylaw was drafted, it was drafted with municipal or publicly owned land in mind. And, and I think it got carried over is what, is what's happened. But the board has a lot of latitude here, given the language. So you can just condition it similarly, I think is what they're saying, that prior to the issuance of the building permit or excavation.
Prior to issuance of, of building permit or disturbance to land?
They come present their form of surety. Surety must be approved by the board.
All right, applicant presents. Surety, which must be approved, okay. All right. Okay, I'll put together that language. And then the only other condition that comes to my mind that we should talk about, and I think we're there, is in regard to the bike route walking path.
The foot easement?
The easement there. Is that something that is solidified enough because it's on the site plan? Or do we need to have something in writing?
I think we need a condition that the terms of the easement meet town approval before some particular step in the process.
I would put to you the building permits will soon to work out all the details of easement language. I wonder if there's another.
Well, you would want the commercial operation date.
Depended on, on approval of the easement? Yeah, I mean, that's the first.
You don't want the easement in operation during construction, right?
Yes, that, I mean, the, the construction is, has, you know, we're not close to the easement. You tell me what you want. We're, we're granting the easement and you tell us what you need to.
It's, okay, so the, so the easement here, just to, to refresh our memories.
You just need a trigger date.
Can, can you? There's wetlands between the easement and the development.
Oh, so then prior to the issuance of the building?
So, this is the easement we're proposing, facing the town.
Oh.
It's, it's the north, you know, north edge of the property. We're building everything to the south of that.
So prior to the issuance of the building permit, they present an easement that, the terms of which are acceptable to the planning board.
Okay.
Okay.
Building permit.
And record same prior to the issuance of the building permit.
So it's a little declining board.
I don't know.
Yep, please. And then we would have a meeting.
And the easement document.
So prior to the issuance of the building permit, the applicant presents an easement, the terms of which are acceptable to the planning board.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we need to say, do we need to say an easement for biking purposes?
Yeah, whatever, you should say whatever the content is.
All right, okay, all right.
Bike and walking down.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering, the building permit is, is left out 30 days off, we think, ideally. And I'm just wondering if there's a date we can do maybe before it comes online, before the facility comes online or something.
That would be the commercial operation date.
Yes, I, I would refer to that.
Yeah, that seems reasonable. Uh, it'd be nice to have it earlier, but, but.
No later than the commercial operation date. How's that?
That, that'd be fine.
That's, yeah.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, no later than?
The commercial operation date.
Okay, all right, all right.
We'll try to get it all wrapped up a little bit.
Have you already got your interconnection?
Yes. And submitted the, the executed interconnection service agreement between those.
Oh, so that's great. That's good.
Okay, I was gonna ask that because it says N grid here, so it is, I know it's ever-source, so.
So, okay, so no later than the commercial operation date, so when do you think that you might be able to?
I think we could put that together soon and then get back here.
Okay.
I wouldn't want to hang up the building.
No, I know you, okay, okay.
We had discussed, uh, screening on Butterfield. Right, so wasn't there a, a spot right at the front part of Butterfield that, and you can't tell in this particular map?
I didn't even remember that.
It may have had a wide enough buffer. I don't remember.
Is Butterfield?
Oh, no, okay, that's, that's fine. I think it was the corner of that back lot, so that's, that's fine. The, I remember we talked about it.
I don't, it made a, I don't recall exactly where that ended up, but the vegetative management plan, there's trees all the way around the entire site. And there's the narrow access.
I, I'd like to condition though that at least they ma- they maintain that vegetative buffer for the life of the project, so.
Part of the, um, part of the conservation permit is we're preparing vegetation management plan that includes topping of trees rather than covering, pruning of deciduous, topping of, topping of conifers and some deciduous that are so bulky that you, you can't just throw them. Remove the invasives and, and we're planting all the disturbed areas on their, on their seed mass. So, it's going to be a real pretty site and we're going to maintain as much of the vegetative buffer as we can without shitting, shitting, but if we can, I'll sign.
Is that conservation language sufficient or did you want to put something in, in our decision?
I, I just think in addition to, and it doesn't have to be that detailed.
Condition that vegetative buffer around.
That we maintain.
At the periphery of the site be maintained.
Yeah.
Or you could say consistent with the orders of conditions.
There you go.
Great.
Yeah, the vegetation management plan includes our ability to chop trees for the life of the facility that we're acquiring and we also maintain the invasive management protocols for the same time, so.
Just checking through my notes, sorry. It's done. And there was nothing as far as securing the site above and beyond what we had discussed. I can't remember. Was there, was it going to be a fence around the site?
There is a fence around the entire site. Chain link fence completely encircles the site. And it's, 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 it's like without a gate, we'd have a knock box for our fire chief and town officials.
All right, that's what I had written in my notes. Now you had, you said this has already been approved by the ConCom or it has not?
Well, they've closed the hearing.
Okay.
With the intent on. They're waiting for us, right?
Um, they're waiting for you and they didn't have a decision prepared Monday.
Okay.
I think, I think there's a reasonable chance to think we would have actually had it approved Monday with a decision in hand. So, we're fully expecting to be approved at the next meeting.
And you were asking us to waive the building permit fee until, until you.
I, we were, not with.
Yeah, no waiver.
The language was that we have to pay building permit fee and we said yes.
Oh, okay. I, I thought in the beginning you were saying.
You can't waive the building.
No, that's not our business.
I thought at the beginning you had said that you wanted to wait.
It was on the peer review that we have to. I, I think the only thing I was referring to earlier, if I said something about the building permit, was there were a few items in the peer review that we felt to be put off, to be submitted prior to the building permit. You know, we already talked about a couple of those.
Thought that's what I heard, yeah.
Yeah, but we weren't talking about waiving the fee.
Should we vote on this now?
Yes.
Uh, do you want to read back the list of conditions so we know what we're voting on?
Of course. So, the first one is with regard to accommodating potential fire apparatus on the site. A letter that the Fire Department is satisfied with the design for accommodating emergency vehicles prior to any excavation or building permit whichever first occurs. Decommissioning plan prior to issuance of bur- building permit or disturbance to land. Applicant presents surety bond which must be approved by the board. Let's see. Prior to the issuance of the building permit or no later than the commercial operation date rather, the applicant presents an easement for biking, walking path, the terms of which are acceptable to the planning board. Condition that vegetative buffer be maintained for the life of the project consistent with the ConCom's order of conditions.
I will move to approve this project with the list of conditions as stated.
In a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It'll have the general, I should have asked, but the general conditions we generally have on every.
What's that?
The general conditions we have normally have be drafted.
So you need to be.
Do I got it dated?
I don't know why I didn't think, I thought of it.
Sorry, it's all right.
Appreciate you.
I know you do.
Traffic in and out.
Does that cover the whole meeting? Do you have to do that for every project?
Well, if, well, if he listened to, I mean, see Tom, if he listens to, if he listened to the whole tape.
Is that affidavit covered the whole meeting or is that specific to one project?
Whole meeting.
Okay.
There's only one project out there.
Right, I just want to make sure. I didn't.
Welcome back.
I don't know.
No.
Why don't you buy over the land over there?
Left you the documentation for.
So, these guys, we're going to finish up pretty quick.
Ten, tenish? Are we on to 466?
This, this is 466. I'm just going to give a brief introduction.
Okay. No times, not a premium today, so. All right, we will move on to the continuation of 466 Chestnut Street.
Yes, he did.
Senior Residential Community and Special Permit. This is the continuation of the, the Special Permit and the Site Plan Review.
Right, so the, the Special Permit for the discussion on senior residential community was closed, but the item has been continued to today. Um, a special permit, a scenic road permit for Elliot Street was voted on some time ago. Um, there also was a scenic road permit for Chestnut Street. The board did vote on it, but due to the, due to an error in processing the application, um, the board would need to take up the vote again tonight. I have minutes that clearly document how the board voted and the issues that were discussed. Um, so there are actually four decisions or items that need to be voted on tonight. Um, the first one is with regard to the conditions of the scenic, of the senior residential community special permit. Um, the second one is the site plan review document. Um, and the third is the scenic road permit Chestnut Street. And the fourth is scenic road permit Elliot Street, or does the fact that the board already voted on that?
Um, they just need to sign that document, right?
They just need to sign the document. Okay, all right.
And there's three votes.
So it's three.
Three votes. So if you would like, Mr. Chair, I can go through the changes that were made from the last meeting.
Excellent.
And just so, I'm gonna, paragraph three of the procedural history just needs to be clarified a little bit. The meeting was actually closed on November fifth. You closed it, you actually voted to close it on November fifth. Uh, and deliberations continued till tonight, November twelfth, and then the vote will occur tonight. So I'll just modify that paragraph to reflect that accurately. The changes that we made from our last meeting, if you flip to item number three under the decision section. And this had to do with the open space parcels. Um, and the addition of the clearing of the underbrush, so item B, three B. Adder prior to the conveyance of O S A two and O S D, the developer shall pay to the town fifteen thousand dollars to be used by the conservation commission to clear the underbrush in the area of Chestnut and Elliot Street in order to aid in the site lines for traffic in the area. That was added. Um, and then five B, um, excuse me, number four, uh, O S A one is to be deeded to the Town of Ashland Conservation Commission. Five B, um, is the condominium association shall, as necessary and at least annually, clear the vegetation. If you go on down to nine, um, we corrected the issuance, the issue with removing the white pine. Twenty-four inch white pine shown at the side entrance and, and then improperly designated as existing tree to remain, so we were clear about what that was. Ten has to do with the sidewalk exchange for instead of building the sidewalks. So the numbers come down that the applicant shall pay forty-four thousand dollars to the town for the following purposes. Prior to the issuance of any building permit for any dwelling units in phase one, eleven thousand dollars to the proceeds of which shall be used for the development of a form-based zoning bylaw by the community development office. And after one year of having received said funds, any unused funds to go into the planning board sidewalk fund. Prior to the issuance of any building permit for the dwelling units in phase two, eleven thousand dollars, the proceeds of which shall be used by the community development office for signage in the downtown. And after one year of having received said funds, any unused funds to go into the planning board sidewalk. Prior to the issuance of the building permits for any dwellings in units th- phase three, eleven thousand dollars, the proceeds of which shall be used by the community development office for the Upper Charles Trail Project. And after one year of having received said funds, any unused funds to go into the planning board sidewalk fund. And then finally, prior to the issuance of any building permit for any dwelling units in phase four, eleven thousand dollars, the proceeds of which shall be placed in the planning board sidewalk fund. I think that reflects the conversation the board had. Number eleven. Yep, sorry.
Can I just suggest one modification to that?
Sure.
And that is for the first eleven thousand dollars being used for the form-based zoning bylaw. Based on some of the timing, I just, I would like to extend that particular one to two years.
Sure. If that, I mean, that's obviously.
Board in agreement? Okay.
Thank you.
Get to work. Uh, eleven A, um, we added some specificity to the O and M planned, eh, plan, and you'll see in the last sentence, I added the operation and maintenance plan shall also include a safety plan for the storage of materials on the property, appropriate warning and no trespass signage at entrances regarding construction, the condition of the premises. Item C, we added the hours of operation during construction, seven to seven, Monday through Saturday, no Sunday operations. And D, the applicant shall provide notice to any and all buyers, the ongoing development and the construction activities while a portion of the property is occupied. And those were the changes in the last meeting that the board had requested.
And sixteen, added recycling.
I'm sorry, we did. Did I miss that underline?
Yep.
I apologize. Yeah, so we added two places recycling in number sixteen, reflective of the request for Mr. Crowe.
So these are the special permit conditions?
Those are the special permit conditions.
Do you need a motion to accept?
Is this?
Motion to approve as amended.
I just wanna make sure, all the, all those parcels that we're kinda going back and forth with, they're all being deeded to the Concom in here?
Yes, that was the underline that I read, um, in paragraph, uh, four of the decision. The existing residential structure parcel O S A one shall be deeded to the Town of Ashland Conservation Commission.
Okay, yep, I saw that, and then the other one's on top, right, number three?
Correct.
Okay.
At the, on the very beginning, item three, procedural history, should say, and closed on November twelfth, right?
Oh, that's, I did that.
Okay.
No, actually, you closed it. I looked, I just looked at my notes, because in my head, I'm like, oh, they actually closed it. You actually closed it last meeting, the fifth.
All right, yeah.
So I'm, I'm rewriting it to say that reflects that it was closed and then you deliberated and voted tonight.
Okay.
Yeah.
That'll be fixed before we sign it, good.
Right, so you could, you could vote to approve as amended.
So I move to approve the special permit for the SRC community as amended?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Great.
If I may?
Please.
I, I was actually thinking I would probably vote no on this, uh, for, because I technically, I, I, we're a technical disagreement on the zoning that we discussed some time ago, but I also believe it's in the best interest of the town that this project go forward. And since we're down a vote tonight, I didn't want to vote no for that. So I, my intention was for this to be a four to one vote for that reason, but I didn't wanna stop it from going forward.
Point taken.
Thank you.
Site plan review. Um, the board actually hasn't closed this hearing, so perhaps you would like to do that.
Okay.
The site plan review hearing.
Do we need to?
I move to close the site plan, uh, the public discussion for site plan review on this project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I move to approve the site plan. Uh, do I need to say what, is there a particular date on the site plan?
Um, so you have a draft decision and it's consistent with all the plans attached to the, that list all the plans.
Ah, there's a second.
So you could say you moved to approve the site plan review decision as presented.
Oh, here it is, okay. Yes, I move to approve the site plan, uh, decision.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so the scenic road for Elliot's taken care of.
Correct, you've already voted on it.
All right, um, so scenic road Chestnut, um, eight o'clock was the time that it was gonna be opened, um, and I wanted, well, I guess, I suppose I, you should open it and then I'll give you, I'll give you an update about, from, from the minutes about what you said.
Do you have something for me to open it?
You just wanna say, um, you're opening the scenic road permit for Chestnut Street, beginning at eight o'clock.
Open the scenic road special permit for Chestnut Street at eight o'clock.
Okay. So. Hold on just a second, please. Okay, um, so what happened on October eighth, um, were actually two votes. Um, there was a motion made by Mr. Crowe to close the scenic road public hearing for Chestnut Street, which was the sewer connection. Um, the motion passed five to zero, so there was a vote on the sewer connection. Um, and, okay. On the condition, okay, and the sewer connection was on the condition that the portion of the rock wall that would be removed would be replaced using the same rocks to the best possible extent. So that, that was the approved motion for the sewer connection Chestnut Street. Um, the other portion was tree removal. And a motion was made to grant scenic road special permit for the removal of the twenty-four inch white pine tree, the thirty inch oak tree and a portion of the rock wall and the condition that the portion of the rock wall that is removed be reused on the site in this, in an aesthetically pleasing context, sensitive manner. So those were the two, those were the two votes that were taken.
You need us to redo this?
Yep.
Do we need to close public hearing again?
Yep.
Discussion?
Okay, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move to grant the special permit for scenic road modification with the same conditions that we did last time.
Second.
Do we have to do them both separate, one for the sewer connection, one for the tree removal?
No.
No. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think that's it. Thank you guys for our work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, I especially appreciate that you reached out to the area residents before proceeding with this to the planning board. That was probably one of the most useful things you did.
Thank you. Looking forward to it. See ya.
Okay, so this obviously, I have seen that came before.
Right, right, yeah, so we just need to.
Okay.
The other one's fine.
Yep.
This is a modification to a site plan, correct?
And special permits. There are two special permits. One is for parking, uh, to waive some of the parking requirements, and the other has to do with the grading so that they can put in slope instead of wall. We did the same thing at Shadow Creek, all places. And it did, it did make it a better plan.
Yeah, it did, yeah.
It's too bad they didn't execute the plan.
Yeah, well.
It's got user error.
Well, it's too bad that they came for the permit after they had already made the change on some, on so many things.
Okay, so we got a site plan.
These people are doing it right and that they're asking before they're doing it.
Two, we got a special part, the two separate special permits?
Two separate special permits.
So parking reduction, which I thought you'd like as soon as I heard that, plus paid.
Um, yep. Actually, you know what? The two public hearings were open last time.
In the modification.
In modification.
Right.
Okay, at this time, I will, uh, welcome the applicants for the rail transit district up. We are going to continue the special permit and site plan modification review.
Great. Can I, can we do the same?
Yeah, let's do it. Can we, um, while he's putting that in.
Uh, for the record, I have watched the video and I have signed the affidavit, so I'm prepared to
Do this?
Fully participate as a member tonight.
Lloyd, it might be this.
Oh, that looks better.
That could be. Let's see, let's see what happens with that.
Who was, um, who was at the last one?
Everyone but John.
Everybody but John, so Vanessa was there too?
Yes, this is Vanessa's first miss on rail transit.
We fancy to shut this off, my mistake.
Looks like it's a transfer number.
Oh. While they're talking, we probably gonna have to think about a, um, a, a follow-up date.
For this?
Yeah, just.
A procedural thing, for the two special permits, uh, if we think we can do those tonight, that would be, um, or if we could do one of them tonight and just finish, that'd be great, but, but if we, i- if there's things where we know we can't do it tonight, then we might wanna hold off any discussion on that topic.
Uh, and, uh, so Vanessa is not. She's gotta listen anyways, right? So.
That's true.
Yeah, if you, if you vote tonight, then obviously it doesn't matter if it's all four of you.
Right.
Right.
Can we get a showing on there as well?
Last, last time we saw it on there.
Oh, well, when we were doing this the first time.
I think they turn it on.
On and on and on, and then we finally figured out, okay, we're gonna schedule one night, we're talking only about drainage, we're only, talking only about traffic. We're only talking only about, um, you know, this issue or that issue, and it may, that was when we started finally actually making progress on it, 'cause there's just too much scope to really make real progress on when everything was on the table, every meeting. That still went pretty long.
No?
It's funny, on the video, the bar has a soul cut off. That's what I like it.
Sorry for the delay, I currently, my battery died while I was in the car, so it's, I had to, I have to restart.
We're not getting an Emmy for this meeting.
Oh. Tonight's meeting won't make it for the end of the year best of marathon.
Hey, Max.
This never happened when we used to use the tripod.
Never have to turn that, the board on, right?
Is there a site alteration special permit here too?
Little, little atmosphere.
Right, try to hit some music. Do you need this too, number sixty five? Martinis? Is that something you need too, or not? Is that, is that, who's this incorrect, the site alteration special permit? Is that another one, like this? Might as well get it done if we, if we need it. V A N A?
This was brought in, we need to, we need to bring this up.
Okay, otherwise, here we, well, you got it, but.
Yep, let's bring it up.
Number sixty five, it's a peer review, just in case.
You don't have that in front of me?
You will.
It shouldn't affect my job, because I'm in engineering and one of the products that has no overlap with what Dell has. There's, there's no obvious redundancy.
Number sixty-five, it only goes up to fifty-two.
Hold on, let's see this.
What, what is it?
Is this for another project?
How many did you guys like?
Lantern. Nice try, buddy.
I tried, I tried. Thank you.
It's the right peer reviewer.
Right, right, I'm onto something.
I was like, they didn't, did you use a tech or something on this one?
Working on their resumes.
Did you talk on this one too?
Yeah, yeah, let me try.
But there's.
No. That's what you need.
Yeah.
So it should be.
Right?
Fazable to the work.
I would think so. There may be some parts that they decide are redundant, so.
No.
That looks good.
Yeah, but who issues that?
That's me, that's us.
You do, planning board? Yeah, it's not the contract?
Yeah, I'll show you.
I've got it right here, bud.
In fact, with your index, you're gonna get there faster than I will.
I know, I'm just gonna get a five point, eight point.
Ooh, ooh. Just showed me, wow.
Oh, there it is.
I had no.
I read Tom's note.
It's extending the display.
All right, we'll try it this way.
You should just, all you should have to do is click.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, it's fine, we'll make it work. Okay, sorry for the delay. It seems to be working a little bit differently than the last time, but we'll persevere. Good evening, my name is Lloyd Geisinger, I'm the president of Thorndike Development, and I'm here this evening with Steve Murphy from Campanelli, Bob Michaux, who are our traffic engineer, David Maxwell, civil engineer, and Dan Holmes, our attorney. We would like to this evening try and address questions that were asked at the last meeting. We think we took copious notes, and we have tried to respond to each question that was asked. By way of context, we received your peer review engineers' report a couple of days ago from Tom Houston, very helpful. What we felt would be most productive is for us to digest that report and work directly with Tom over the next couple of weeks, trying to work through his checklist of items, so that hopefully when he presents to you, we would like to suggest that your next meeting, that we will have achieved consensus on most of the issues that have been raised and can address whatever, hopefully no outstanding issues at that time. So we have been quite busy over the last couple of weeks since we met with you last time. We have met with the, the MBTA road engineers, as well as DPW here, and a number of other people in trying to understand a little better how the MBTA road mass works effort would mesh with what we're proposing, and I think we have some exciting information to share with you in that regard this evening. We also met with Joel to talk about the trail systems, and we have some productive thoughts there as well. We've met with the fire chief to discuss emergency access. There was a good deal of discussion at the last meeting, as well as other meetings that we've had, about the currently approved emergency access, and we have some thoughts on that as well. We've also looked at several of the traffic issues that were raised and done a comparison of the existing approval versus the new approval, which was also requested of us. So those are the topics that we'd like to cover this evening, and of course, any new items that might come up and questions that come from that. And so with that as an introduction, I'll hopefully move forward here, there we go. I believe everyone is familiar with the site, but just for anyone new, and I got a new pointer here that works much better. So the area shown in yellow is what was commonly referred to as Lot One, which had, which includes the existing site plan approval for the old J P I plan, and is the site for our current proposal, the Ashland Rail Transit Apartments. The shaded area is the entire rail transit district. The road running through the middle is the MBTA access road with the train station at the bottom and the Dunkin' Donuts up by one thirty-five. Again, by way of review, this is the proposal that we have presented to the town and to this board in particular. It shows three hundred ninety-eight apartments that are all clustered along a spine road, which is tree-lined and includes a sidewalk running its length. There's a village green up at the far end. These buildings are in general three stories on the spine roadside, four stories on the rear. There are detached garages along the edge of the rear alley. All buildings have elevators, and the, and we have essentially eliminated the retaining walls that were quite prevalent in the previous scheme. All of these, the slopes are shown here as generally two to one slopes on the high side and the low side. The first thing I'd like to address is the pedestrian system that we have been exploring, both in terms of a, of a connection of a trail system, which of course would need to be coordinated with McGonco, but which we, we met with the, with Joel on the, the trail committee, and we also, as part of our discussions as to how the MBTA access road would be reconstructed, settled on a very exciting cross-section, which I'd like to jump ahead to and then come back to the plan that we were looking at. So there was consensus among the design team, which included DPW and town manager, and to go to a cross-section that is consistent with the, the newest thinking called complete streets, which is an effort that's part of smart growth being promoted by the Mass Highway Department, in fact nationwide. And what that means is that there would be two ten-foot travel lanes with two-foot shoulders, so narrower travel lanes, which tends to have a calming effect on speed, which Bob Michaux will talk about a little bit later, a six-foot grass strip, and then a twelve-foot multimodal pedestrian slash bicycle path that would run the entire length of the MBTA access road. So this provides for, will hopefully encourage the use of the, the pedestrian system, as well as bicycles, and might be the prototype for other developments of a similar nature in other parts of town. So if we go back to the plan now, the blue line that is shown all along the MBTA access road on the Lot One side would be that continuous twelve-foot wide pedestrian slash bicycle route. There would be a couple of spots along the way where the cross-section would need to tighten up a little bit, where it's particularly challenging, and there's some riprap, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, along the road, but the concept would remain the same, of a dedicated, separate pedestrian bicycle path, the travel lanes, the street trees, the grass strip. I think it's a tremendous improvement over what's there now, and as well as what had been previously proposed, and as I said, there was consensus from all people that were in on the meeting. So with that as a jumping off point, we also looked at how a, a pedestrian bike path might make its way through the property and connect what would ultimately be a larger system down, to downtown. And as I think many of you are aware, there is an existing easement that runs through the property between what is generally Lot One and Lot Two. It's an old Shell oil easement abandoned long ago, but in very good condition, and that served as the basis for the discussion. As I think you're also aware, there is a right-of-way that Mr. Gainer has maintained as part of his property that runs to High Street here. It does involve a wetlands crossing, but for a bicycle or a pedestrian path, it seems like a manageable crossing based on conversations with our wetlands consultant. We have not discussed that crossing with conservation as yet. But in looking at that type of a pedestrian connection, this path is intended to follow the, the right-of-way, the existing Shell oil easement in general, and then the top of slope of our development. So taking a twelve or fifteen-foot shoulder at the top of the slope, so that it would be a spot that would straddle both what we're proposing for development and what might occur in Lot Two. On the, crossing the MBTA access road, there are a couple of alternate paths that have been looked at in a very schematic way to eventually connect with the light rail right-of-way, or I shouldn't say right-of-way, but pathway that exists right now and could take you down into downtown. I need to emphasize that this is extremely preliminary, just a draft, and of course would need to be worked through with McGonco, but we were all at the meeting, including Tom Powers and Bob Gainer, who, excuse me, are here this evening as well, from McGonco, and there was general nods around the table that something conceptual along these lines would make a lot of sense. And as I believe the board is aware, there is two hundred thousand dollars in the Mass Works grant for bikeways and pedestrian paths within the RTD district, which has yet to be particularly earmarked.
Lloyd, when would something like that be finalized, I guess, the discussion?
Well, that, that type of a discussion is outside of our purview. We are only purchasing Lot One. So we would certainly agree to cooperate in any land rights that are necessary to put the path on our property in the location shown, or whatever is ultimately agreed to, but the larger picture is a master planning exercise that would need to be discussed with McGonco.
Okay.
But I think what we're trying to do is advance the process, establish the dialogue, identify a, a, a center line that would work, and then commit ourselves to cooperating with the town and other parties as needed to facilitate that, you know, that bikeway.
So, Mr. Chair, you could, we could add a condition that says that, you know, we could get in on a plan that they would agree to allow an access easement for bike and walking path purposes along the area that Geisinger laid out, right?
And that would, that would be our expectation.
Yep.
So I'd like to turn my attention now to the emergency access discussion. We've heard from almost every group that we've talked with since we started this process for different reasons, whether or not the existing emergency access that is shown on this plan in green, running down, should be revisited. And as we looked at it carefully, it occurred to us as well that one of the shortcomings of this emergency access is that it really only services Lot One, and possibly Lot Two, but doesn't solve the larger emergency access issue that would relate to the development of the entire RTD district. In other words, the MBTA access road is essentially a dead end right now. When you come in off of, you know, one thirty-five, if we look ahead ten, fifteen, twenty years, and there's development of Lot Three on the other side, getting emergency access from there is more challenging. We met with the fire chief and his captain, and explored the op, the possibility, which had been suggested to us in, at an earlier meeting here, of improving the emergency access shown into the MBTA parking lot from High Street. Mind you, we're only talking about an emergency access here. You know, any discussions about an opening of that is, again, outside of our purview. But with respect to an emergency access, he was very open to that idea and encouraged us to explore it further. That would require, obviously, the cooperation of the MBTA as well. The advantage, I believe, to a connection in this location is that it would provide an emergency access that would service the entire RTD district and not just Lot One. And in connection with that, we have investigated a, a method of getting our pedestrians from the apartments here down to the train station, because as you'll recall, at the last meeting, I had described the fact that we were concerned about ADA compliance, and that right now, the idea was that pedestrians could walk down this emergency access road to High Street and then swing around into the parking lot. Well, obviously, if the emergency access gets built in a different location, that, that path is no longer afforded to them. So we have investigated and determined at a conceptual level to be feasible, running a, what's called a hill elevator, a tram, if you will, from the parking lot here directly down to a landing spot that would connect to the multimodal path here and allow someone to walk directly in. And believe it or not, these are heavily used on the West Coast, there's actually one in Plymouth at White Cliffs. This is not new technology, very common in Europe and Switzerland, and this is something that we're very excited about. If the, this, we've received a proposal from the company that builds these things. The cab would hold six to eight people, the travel time would be about two minutes from the top to the bottom, solves our ADA compliance problem, provides a direct connection for people in a controlled environment, and as I described, the preliminary location that we've identified is that dotted line right there. We have not discussed this yet with Mr. Gainer, so there's a lot of challenges to overcome, but this is something that we think would be a tremendous advantage, and might work in combination with the change in the access point. So this is a proposal that we're very excited about, and we hope the planning board sees its merit as well. One of the other questions that we were asked was what are, what is the height of our buildings to the peak, and this shows you what the heights are, just under fifty-two feet on the three-story side to the very tallest peak, and sixty-two feet to the lower level here. And it's a fairly typical profile. That was a question asked and now answered. I'd like to now turn the, this portion of the presentation over to Bob Michaux, who will run through some of the traffic questions that were raised.
Thank you. Thank you, board chair, members of the board. Robert Michaux, a principal with M D M Transportation Consultants based in Marlboro, Massachusetts. Really five points that were raised as we were taking notes at last hearing that I wanted to provide some clarification and answers to. First, having to do with comparing today's conditions with those that were in place and served as the basis for the approvals in two thousand seven. So we have access to the two thousand seven study that provided the basis for the impact of the project, which at the time consisted of five hundred residential units, along with the hundred and ninety-eight restricted units on Lot Two. And in that same vein, we have replicated that study using current information and have reduced build out to three hundred and ninety-eight units. So first question was, how, how do the volumes on area road, roads compare to two thousand seven conditions? And the answer is that there's really no substantial change, and in fact, if you look at some of the area permanent count stations, you'll see that there's a flat or slightly declining growth rate over the period between two thousand seven and today. And most specifically, when you look at the data from the two thousand seven report for Route one thirty-five and for the MBTA access road in particular, you'll see that the volumes are the same or lower, consistent with those area permanent count stations. And to illustrate that point, we've done a couple of bar charts here, sorry for the colors, they're a little bit washed out, but you'll see that we've compared the daily volumes. But you'll see that we've compared the daily volumes here, 2007 to 2015. In 2007, the total daily traffic volume flow is around 18,000 vehicles per day. And lo and behold, in 2015, at that same location is about 18,000 vehicles per day. So over what is essentially an eight-year period, there's been literally no change or growth in the amount of daily traffic that's using 135 at the very location that we're interested in, closest to the MBTA access road. When you look at a peak hour comparison and you look at the 2007 and the 2015 volume comparisons, most specifically at 135 and the access road itself, and you look at all the volumes that are traveling through that intersection, in 2007, those volumes were about 14, combined 1,400 vehicles per hour, which is, in fact, just slightly lower in 2015. So we conclude that, consistent with Mass DOT database and, and these data, that the conditions upon which we're basing the impact today in 2015 are materially not any different than existed at the time in 2007. Second question was directed at comparing specifically the traffic for a 500-unit project to a 398-unit project. The study does, as, as was done in 2007, consider the mutual or combined impact of lots one and two for planning purposes, infrastructure planning purposes and mitigation purposes. And, and we've shown a reduction. If you only look at the 500-unit project and you take the 10% transit use credit that we, we mentioned last hearing and that was also used in 2007, the net difference in trips over the course of a typical peak hour between what was approved and what we're proposing now is about 50 fewer trips per hour during peak hours and more than 500 vehicle trips lower over the course of an entire day. So that hopefully will give the board some measure of comparison to what was approved versus what we're currently talking about, the incremental impact of which is between 50 and up to 500 daily trips lower than what served as the basis of mitigation and impact in 2007. The third question related to the need to have to expand the study area in any way. And our conclusion is that that is not merited or warranted for a number of reasons. Number one, the study locations that were evaluated in our most recent study were the identical, the same locations that were used for permitting purposes in 2007. They include the most impacted locations in the downtown area as well as, of course, the MBTA access road itself, which is the most impacted location. Secondly, that the residential units in being reduced from 500 to 398 reduced the, the impact of the project by more than 20% relative to what was approved in 2007, 2008. Third, that the volume on area roads are the same or lower than served as the basis for that original approval. And finally, and to the extent there's a need to study beyond these locations, the applicant has committed in the development agreement signed with the town in September of this year to provide some $50,000 of funding for a traffic study and associated improvements at the Olive Street intersection just west of this property. So for these reasons, we don't believe that there's any merit, need to have to expand the study beyond what we've documented in the most recent effort. Fourth question, which is noted as three, typo, sorry. Does the analysis that is presented in the most current study reflect the potential future development within the rail transit district? And the answer is yes. I mentioned that, as had been done in 2007, we have also included the impacts of future development of Lot Two for 190 units of age-restricted senior housing. The balance of land within the district has no definitive uses that, quite frankly, once they are identified, would be separate, subject to separate review and approvals under not only the local process but the MEPA, the state-level process. So for purposes of what we're intending to achieve for approvals in Lot One and associated mitigation for Lot One, we've taken an appropriate tact of looking at our project, of course, and, consistent with 2007, the impacts of the adjoining Lot Two, although there aren't no specific plans for its development yet. Fourth, what area projects are included in, in the report? Have we taken a comprehensive approach in identifying traffic conditions on Route 135? And that serve as the basis of mitigation that's memorialized in the development agreement with the town? The short answer is that we've taken a very conservative or, or high-level guesses to what growth would occur along the quarter over an extended period, a seven-year horizon. That seven-year horizon, notwithstanding that history shows that traffic really isn't growing, it's flat and so, or maybe slight, slightly declining, we've nonetheless applied a general background growth rate of 3.5% over a seven-year period, about half percent growth per year. In addition to that, we've also looked at very specific development projects, the largest of which is Legacy Farms in the adjoining community, Hopkinton. We assume the entire build-out of that project from start to finish. We don't look at only what's currently completed or in process. We look at the entirety of that project as it's been filed through the MEPA office and as it's been amended through local approvals to convert portions of what was originally commercial to residential use. So we have very current assumptions and we're using the entire build-out for that project in developing the growth factor for the quarter. We also look at reoccupancy of currently vacant space, most notably at the Ashland Tech Center here downtown and at the 10 to 50 Main Street facility. And we've built those volumes and assuming that they would be reoccupied and, and would be used to their fullest extent. We look at office and apartment uses at 21 Main Street, the recently opened Needham Bank, which at the time we did our study was not open, 250 West Union Street, which is the assisted living facility nearing completion. That's included in our report. And, and finally, of course, the Lot Two project at, within the RTD that I mentioned. We do know that Ben Stevens' project, the Ashland Woods apartment development on Route 135, the 60-unit project, was not specifically called out in the report. That project is in its initial phases of occupancy, was not occupied at the time we did our council study. It would generate approximately 30 total vehicle trips over the course of an hour, about half of which would be east and half of which would be west of our project, so a net difference of about 15 vehicle trips on either side of where the MBTA access road is. By virtue of our including a general background growth rate, we've more than accounted for any impact that that project and similar projects to it would have in this area over that seven-year period of time. So we believe that we've comprehensively looked at all of the known and permitted in-process developments in the area and that we've accounted for, quite frankly, a conservative growth to include things like Ashland Woods and other projects that may coincidentally come online within that seven-year period. So hopefully that provides clarity on, on the basis for, for our study. The final question had to do with, in addition to those measures that are memorialized in the development agreement, which have to do principally with updating signal equipment, re-phasing traffic signals and restriping, that perhaps there should be some coordination or connection between the signals along Route 135. And as, as was the case in 2007, we're simply taking what was committed in 2007 and implementing that, despite the fact that we have lower impact and despite the fact that the volume conditions really haven't changed since that time. So we believe that the, the range of mitigation actions are in fact appropriate as proposed, that at the end of that implementation phase that there will be acceptable operating conditions at all of the studied locations. And that while coordinated signal control is not proposed in that agreement, it's certainly not something that's being precluded should the town opt to pursue that form of control along Route 135. And I've got backup slides that I can use to illustrate points. But I think that's really a series of questions we wanted to make sure were clear to the board. We took notes on, and if we missed anything, if there are any further questions, we'd be more than glad to entertain, and attempt to answer those. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, again, before the, before the states, please.
All right, can you keep it short, Mark?
I will. It's a quick question. Is this going to be a public input part of being coming up to in this, this will be a public open?
Yes, it is open to the public at the end. We're going to let the applicant go through their entire presentation.
We're almost done.
Thank you.
One of the other questions that we were asked was if we could do a comparison of the existing approved project, which includes 500 apartments, versus the 398. And it was a somewhat open-ended ask, but we've tried to identify what we thought was some key elements and put them into a chart. And by the way, we will send this over as a PDF Nat to you tomorrow, the presentation. So with respect to the number of buildings, the 500, the JPI proposal included 18 apartment buildings. Our proposal includes nine. So obviously, a net change of minus nine buildings. There were 800 bedrooms in the 500-unit project. We have 647, a net reduction of 153. JPI had 900 parking spaces. We are at 717. David, what's the 651?
I have to provide for this reduction.
Oh, so we're proposing to actually build 651 and have laid out for 717. That's the, one of our waiver requests for parking, which would result in a reduction of 249. As I think everyone is aware, the JPI proposal relied very heavily on extensive retaining walls. We didn't actually calculate, but thousands of square feet of retaining walls and we have, we believe, 100. So impervious area, 18 acres versus 12.3, a significant reduction of 6.5 acres, almost a third less impervious area. Water usage, which of course is an ongoing concern here in Ashland, dropping from 88,000 gallons a day to 71,000, a reduction of 17,000. And I would point out that these are Title V gallons. So actual gallonage is probably about 60% of that number, which would also have been true with the JPI proposal. Traffic trips, which Bob just went through in more detail, but just as a, as the, at the grossest number, just over 3,000 compared to 2,500, a reduction of 486. So these are just a couple of categories, several categories that we selected that seem to be relevant, most of which come from the zoning table, just to give the board a sense of how the two proposals compare, not just at a unit count level. And there's one more category that we unintentionally omitted, and of course, that's the affordable units. In the original proposal, there were zero. And in the current proposal, there are 40 at 10%.
Lloyd, you omitted one other thing. They had no elevators, you used only elevators.
We have elevators and they had none. Thank you, Bob. I think that concludes our presentation. Because I can't see this on my screen, I'm just going to click back to the site plan so that we have something to relate to. That's not a bad one, stop that. So we'll, we're happy to entertain questions and comments.
Right. Anything for the board before I open it up to the public?
I have a number of questions on, on different topics. A question for the traffic engineer. You stated that you don't think we necessarily need to do this as part of this mitigation. As far as the interconnecting of the signals so that they, they behave intelligently with respect to each other, would that be something that would likely result in better performance of the system? Is that something that we should look at, say, when Lot Three is developed?
It's certainly something that, we, we've done these types of coordinated systems, most recently in Milis on Route 109. And they can be effective. And we, in fact, took some time to look at the parameters of what the cycle lengths are, each one of the signals along that quarter, the Summer Street, the MBTA, the Main Street signals in particular. They're not entirely compatible in terms of how much time or cycle length each one of those locations requires to operate efficiently. So there's no guarantee that you, you'd gain a whole lot of efficiency, frankly, out of attempting to coordinate them. Because when you do so, they really have to operate on the same cycle length, the same parameter. So, for instance, while the MBTA access road might work on 100-second cycle length, the Main Street signal may want to work on 120-second cycle length. To coordinate it would mean that you, it necessarily would have to increase the amount of time and delay for traffic operations at, at the MBTA roadway by 20 seconds to, to, you know, effectuate that type of control. So it would have to be studied. My initial view is that it's not something that's necessarily merited or warranted at this time, but we're certainly not precluding it or writing it off as something that shouldn't be further evaluated by the town as time goes on.
And just for reference, how complicated is doing any of that coordination? What would be, what would that entail?
Typically, using newer technologies, as we've done in Milis, you would use a GPS-based technology. And that would need to be compatible with the controller, that, the computer that controls the signal. And, and so there is likely to be some equipment upgrades to the signals for compatibility purposes with that GPS equipment. You know, on a per-location basis, that the cost could, could vary widely depending on whether or not you need to replace the controller for compatibility. So I wouldn't want to hazard a guess on that right now. In the Milis example, the equipment happened to be compatible out of the box. So, you know, it, it was a fairly easy lift, you know, but, but there's no guarantee of that.
Okay.
It would have to be evaluated.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I also have a question on the emergency access. My understanding is the purpose of the emergency access is if something gets blocked, that you still have access from two different ways. And the reason that you had the emergency access onto High Street is if something gets blocked internally to your own roadway system, you've sort of got a dual system in the back. But in the front, if something gets blocked, the whole back of the complex, there's no way in or out of there.
Well, I'm glad you pointed that out because I realized that I did not fully present our proposal. And it includes, and this was discussed with the chief, we've actually slightly modified the design and in a very light green, you can see we're, we're proposing a second emergency access only off of the MBTA access road right here, which would come in and tie into this parking lot. Just so happens that the grades work very nicely. We're at grade in this location. So that would provide two points of access here in case the entry road was blocked. And you're absolutely correct that from this point onward, there is a dual system that wraps around completely and along the back and provides two points of access. We've discussed with the chief several different options to provide a suitable second means of, of access from this point to this point, such as a hardened shoulder along the existing driveway so that if there was a vehicle that was blocking this driveway, an emergency vehicle could go up on the hardened shoulder and get by. So this was a extended discussion with the chief. There's a lot more work to be done to flesh this out entirely. But the combination of a second means of egress here, providing access that would flow through the entire system and, and taking a closer look in terms- And, and taking a closer look in turning radii and our alley system that runs along the back and parallels the main road. It seemed to be a solution that the chief felt was workable.
And it doesn't show on this plan because it's not showing the elevations, but it looks like you could connect two little parking lots in the back there.
Over.
Right there.
Yeah.
But, but that's, I assume there's too much of a height difference there to make that work?
Right, and we actually talked about that with him in detail. It's, it's, it's very challenging. But again, if the board feels that this approach has merit. And it frankly, for us, is hand and glove with the tram that we're proposing, which is frankly quite expensive. So, you know, it seemed to us that, taking a fresh look here in the year 2015 at how emergency access and egress might be approached for not just Lot 1, but the RTD district as a whole. Made some sense because we kept hearing it over and over again. This is a very, very challenging roadway. It's very steep, even plowed. You know, the likelihood of ice buildup since it's not being used on a regular basis. You know, we had this conversation with the chief. I've been in many communities, which was not the case with your chief. But I've heard many fire chiefs say, I wouldn't go near a gated emergency access road because I might show up and discover that I've got the wrong key to the lock or I can't get through the crash gate. And so there's, there's a great deal of controversy throughout the country really as to how effective these types of emergency access roads are. The one that we're talking about down into the parking lot is much more navigable. It's much, much shorter. Right now, it's too steep at its bottom. While a SUV can make it, a fire truck would bottom out. So it would require a decent amount of work. This is no easy chore either. But it's, but because it's part of the MBTA system, the MBTA would maintain it. They maintain it now. They plow it now. And it would provide, as I mentioned, access to a larger area than just Lot 1.
The, the other question I had about the, the Hill elevator?
Yes.
I love technology. I don't know if you saw the smile on my face when you were talking about it.
I didn't, but I was looking for smiles. I didn't see too many smiles.
I was probably because I was turned to look at the screen, but I, I think it's, it's, it looks incredible. The questions I have, first of all, how many people did you say it could hold?
Six to eight.
And how long does each trip take?
Two minutes.
So we should be thinking about how, you know, there can be quite a queue then for getting for, say, one of the more popular trains, but.
Well, you can always walk.
That's true.
And ride a bike. And, you know, I think that, again, these people have a great deal of experience in providing these types of facilities. If, if the board thinks this is something that has merit, we would investigate it further. I did, we did ask the question whether or not the travel time can be reduced. And we were told that there's actually a, it's not a statute, but there are regulations that the, that it can't travel any faster than it's already been programmed.
So a couple of the other questions along that, since this handles the ADA side, would it be possible to also have a sidewalk for? Say there was a long line and somebody wanted to, could they walk straight along that distance?
Well, it's 120 feet. So we're talking about climbing a 12-story building. And there are requirements for landings as well. And we have serious concerns about winter. Those stairs would have to get shoveled and then they will ice over each night because they're probably concrete. And it seemed to us to be quite a hazardous situation. That's why we looked to this.
How does the Hill elevator work with snow?
Well, apparently.
You mentioned, you mentioned these are common in California and I, they don't get the same snow we do.
The company that builds them is actually in Minnesota, which of course, I don't think there are too many hills in Minnesota. But we talked to them about that and the wheels apparently, or where it connects to the rails are designed much like a, a engine on a train to push the snow off the tracks. And of course, you have the advantage that you're going downhill. So you have some, you know, some momentum and some inertia. Nertia's the wrong word, to push the snow away from the tracks. And we were told that in a general snowfall, not a two-foot snowfall, but in a general snowfall, that they're quite effective. There's also the opportunity to heat the, the rails, which would not be complicated at all, which would also be effective. But in a bad snowstorm, you're probably shutting it down.
Lloyd, is this one cart?
Excuse me?
It looks like three in the picture, but is this just one cart that goes up and down?
It's just one. Yes, they're just showing, I think, different points along the way. Yeah, there'd be no way to get the others out of the way.
So you wouldn't be able to take the cart from the bottom up?
Oh, yes. It would, it would.
You just got to wait for it to come down to you?
Well, you can program it however you, you can program it so that it returns to the top automatically, or you can leave it at the bottom. It would probably be operated by a FOB access. So in other words, people who lived in the apartment community would receive the equivalent of a key card that would allow them access to the, to the, you know, the actual vehicle. Or, yeah.
Under their windows so you can see out while you're doing it?
Yes, they're, it's all glass.
No, I thi, I think it's a great idea. I think you said creative solution. I think that is, yeah, very creative. And I think it's a great idea. The time, it might, you know, back up a little bit. I know you say it costs a lot of money, so I hesitate in even saying it, but do they have a system where they put dual tracks? And where they could, you could run two carts or?
Didn't even occur to me.
I guess that just financially would make sense to go.
Well, you know, I, I think that we need to invest, obviously, all kidding aside, if we're going to invest this kind of money in a system like this, we want it to work. I mean, if we wind up frustrating our customers, we've outsmarted ourselves. We need to do more homework on this. You know, we've taken this far enough. We've received an actual proposal from the company with detailed engineering and cost estimates. So this is certainly from our perspective, we've taken it far enough that we're willing to pursue this further if the board feels that this has merit.
I think, I think it's a great idea and it connects your project right to the, I mean, it really ties them together nicely. And I think it's, I think it's a phenomenal idea if, if it works.
Yeah, I would say, you know, you've heard some complaints about the traffic mitigation. I think you could make a very good argument that this is part of your traffic mitigation.
Oh, absolutely. And we heard that as well, you know, the whole idea of people getting in their cars and driving down. This would be a weather-protected connection. It would take them, you know, and we thought a great deal about where, you know, we would land this thing. And we went out there, Dave McQuill and I, we looked at different options. There is in fact a perfect flat area right before the wetlands and of course, with the multimodal path that would be coming by. We, we felt this was the best location because it would be the safest location. You know, one concern we had was, you know, after, in the dark, you know, wintertime, 5 o'clock, someone walking to the tram. You don't, this is the spot where all the cars would be leaving the parking lot. So since the use of it would be directly connected to a train either coming in or going out, there would at that same point invariably be cars driving out of the parking lot. So this would be the highest visibility location and would need to be well lit. And of course, we would need the cooperation of the MBTA to be able to do this.
Comments? I'll do a couple of comments. I too love this idea as far as, I think, my opinion on the way the town even looked at this whole rail transit district when it was first kind of in vogue, when it came in was, they were really looking for a product that would be less car dependent. And this being located near, this is a nice little gem we have in town as far as the commuter rail, an actual location. And many towns around us don't have that. And I think the whole, I think a lot of people in town, I should say, really were counting on something like this so that people in a development like this, which is probably our one shot, I would argue, of people that will really use this. I mean, maybe you can argue that a senior housing would, but I'm pretty sure they're not going to be commuting as much as people in a development like this would be towards, towards the city. And that's why I kept pushing you on this and I was, as I was watching the video, I was seeing everybody else was doing the same thing. I personally, I think this is the, this is the key to making this whole project work. It's going to sound kind of crazy. You're going to say, of course, there's lots of other really nice things you guys did and very appropriate things I like that I'll mention in a second. But the way that you solve this problem of making it convenient and efficient for people to get down there is the whole key to it. I know it's tricky, you know, there's another lot you got to go through and work it out with the current owner. But to ask people, somebody else mentioned maybe at the last meeting, that people are just going to drive their cars down there and eventually clog up the parking lot. Because we are getting closer every year towards buildout and we will, we are starting to legitimately fill up that parking lot down there. Which is a good thing, right? Because people are using the commuter rail. It's bad when you can't actually use it anymore. So I think it's a huge problem slash opportunity if you look at it this way. And I was originally looking at this, as soon as you started doing this, I'm thinking gondola, gondola. It's kind of like that. When you, but the problem is if you limit it to one car, up, one car down, and then it becomes inconvenient. What do people do? You're late for work. You drive your car and you give up on it. And then if it's broken down, one car, that's 100% of your carts. You're done. So I would say, if you can look into it, I would definitely encourage you to look into it. The two minutes, it's not too bad. But again, it's, it's got to come all the way up to two and then all the way down, again, four minutes. But if there's 15, 20 people waiting, you know, because they all get out at the same train, because the trains are timed, right? And just, just a thought, if there is a way to have a system that's a two up and down, and I'm not even joking about a gondola. If there's a legitimate way to, to do that where it literally is continuously going, probably not safe, but I'm sure the company. Some of these companies have some really innovative designs and I think you guys are in a great opportunity to look into it. I was going to say, just my little comment would be just to make sure that these are equipped with safety tight poles. You are locked in a cart with somebody for two minutes randomly and the train runs late. So there is obviously where you'd want to be able to immediately call the police by pulling something, so. And one thing I really did like about the plan you guys proposed today, as far as incorporating the complete streets and the bike and walking paths separated. That was something that came up on 126 when we were laying out a bunch of different designs for the town. And they pretty, pretty substantially went in that direction towards having it separated. We couldn't always do that on 126 because there wasn't the width, but I did, that was a, I know it's kind of hard to see scale-wise that that patch of grass between the bikes and pedestrian walk path and the cars is actually six feet. But it kind of looks like it's two feet in that picture, right?
Well, we, we were a little bit, this was done at about 6 o'clock this evening. We were a little challenged on our scaling.
Yeah, it's okay though, but what people need to know is that just the, the strip of grass where the tree is, is substantial. It's a nice little greenway. That I think would also be huge to the, to the success of this development. I mean, obviously you're going to have very nice-looking buildings. I've said that before, a nice-looking, the elevator's going to help. You get a very high end. You're bringing in very high end of the market. You get an $1,800 to $2,400 price tag. It's going to bring professionals. I think this will, there's going to be great opportunity for growth as far as that. And some people say that the kind of growth that a, a town would tend to go after. And I, you can argue other sides of that, but let's just say that. So that's my 10 cents on that. That's all I got right now.
No, if I do a couple more things. One thing that the previous developer had done was provide renderings of what this would look like from Pleasant Street.
From Pleasant Street?
Yeah, because that's the, pretty much the only place I think, within town, where you would see this project from off-site.
Okay.
And it would be nice to have those if it's not too difficult.
We can look into that.
And.
It's quite a distance away.
Yeah, I, I know that with the, the previous plan, in reaction to looking at those, there was a modification in one of the buildings to put a clock tower on the building because we realized that would be seen from Pleasant Street and sort of, you know, the main feature at the top of the hill there.
I feel like it's more impacted by Lot 3, no?
Yeah.
I mean, maybe with the elevation.
Well, you know, frankly, the, the previous proposals buildings were significantly closer to Pleasant Street than ours are as a result of dropping the number of buildings, but we'll take a look at it.
Yeah, and, and I know in many cases, renderings, you know, you just tell the computer to do it. It's not, in some cases, not as bad as it, as it used to be, but I, I don't know. If you come back and say, it's not practical, then, you know, I don't know that I'll push on that.
Takes a lot more than a request like that for us to come back and say, it's not practical.
Say two more things.
But.
Yeah, go ahead. And I didn't get a chance to comment because I was obviously listening to and watching the video before. I do like that you brought all the storm water management onsite. So that was a great plan and modification to the site plan. And I do like that they have reduced the amount of parking. It does seem appropriate. I think even peer review does agree with that. So less pavement in general, good, particularly if, if it's fitting the need of the development and our peer review appears to agree with that.
Thank you. So I'm, I'm agreeing with the parking. And since you mentioned the storm water management, I know you weren't here, but there was a lot of good discussion around how the old storm water management for Lot 1 and 2 tied together. And if this mitigated the issue and if it mitigated icing on the access road. I didn't kind of hear anything address that. I don't know if you guys are still looking into that.
Well, the, the, I don't, thank you for reminding me. It's not that we neglected it, but it was discussed as part of the MBTA access road reconstruction project. So Allen and Major is preparing the plans through Mr. Gainer, but for the town that will be bid and ultimately built. And they will be addressing those types of issues as part of their, their plans.
Makes sense. Good. All right. So I, I guess a couple of initial reactions. I like the, the complete street solution and the, the trail plan, seeing it on phase one. Although it may not be complete and there's some work that needs to be done, I, I think it's important to have it there. Just talked about the storm water a little bit. I'd like to hear more about the High Street emergency egress. Did, did you show that it's actually moving over or is it going to be in the same location? You're just going to grade it out so it's a safer?
No, we would, the, and again, this is, you're, you're seeing how far this, this planning has been taken so far. It's just, it's a line on a plan. But we have gone out and looked at it carefully. And the, the notion is that the existing emergency access that comes down would be generally maintained. But we believe there would need to be some adjustment at the bottom where it meets the parking lot in order to address the fire chief's concerns about bottoming out a large engine. And exactly how that would work, we have some thoughts, but we need to get some survey and of that area so that we can do some actual engineering. But we didn't want to go down that path if the board didn't feel that it had merit.
Okay. I, I do think it's important to look at, look at that. So I'd love for you to continue to look into the egress there. So, so my, I guess, I, I like the tram as well. I think it's a creative solution. I, I also think it becomes a centerpiece of, of maybe the development. What was important to me, and I think all of us, was keeping a transit, right, trying to keep the district transit, encouraging people to use the, use the train station and walk and bike and find other ways to get there. So I, it's definitely a creative thing that we don't really see all over and I think it's also a good selling point for the, for the area. It certainly will have a lot of downtime, so it's not something that's going to be used. So I can understand not wanting to overbuild it. At the same time, I think the argument of if you have 18 people that want to go down to the train in the morning and you got to wait for six trips, no one's going to stand there for 20 minutes to, for it to go up and down. So we've got to kind of figure that out and just see what works best. But I think it's the right track anyway that we're heading down. What's that? Ah, there you go. I, I certainly respect the information you provided on the traffic study. I, I have to go back and look at some of that. I, I still think it's leaving out some, some important details. I, I think that this project, phase one, is an improvement. It certainly will decrease traffic itself. And this is not. I, I think that this project, Phase One, is an improvement, it certainly will decrease traffic itself, and this is not, um, you know, the straw that breaks that camel's back, but it certainly needs to be, um, addressed, and, and addressed maybe not in this modification, but maybe by McGonco or something. Um, it's important to me to still see what the, what a overall build-out plan is for this area. We can't just continue to build Phase One and then look at Phase Two and say, well, Phase Two isn't, you know, the one that's putting it over, and then Phase Three brings in some commercial, and that's not the one that puts the traffic over the edge, without having another way in and out of this development. I, I hate the fact that it's just an MBTA access road, and I know it'll be a complete street in the future that comes in and out of here, and it forces all that traffic and anything that goes on in that development, in and out of one way only. And as you mentioned, the rail station is getting more popular, so there is more traffic on that road today, and we do have a school at the corner of that one thirty-five and the access road, which it just, it, it's, there, there's been no solution even suggested as to how do we address that moving forward. And I think that's my biggest hang-up, more so than the additional traffic you're adding to the roads.
If I might ju- if I might just comment on that.
Yeah.
Cause I think it's a very legitimate point, and I've been involved in planning like this my entire adult life. And I, I think that when you ask that question and look at it, it's important to keep in mind that the improvements that are being made to the overall condition in connection with this project is the six point three million dollar Mass Works grant, three and a half million of which is going towards dramatically improving the MBTA access road. So if one were to look at the impacts from this Lot One development, as compared to the level of improvements that are being made, probably over five million dollars of traffic improvements between the complete, uh, streets, uh, improvement to MBTA access and the traffic improvements at the beginning, it's not the whole story, but it's a good start. And I think that it, it puts the town on the, on the, on a solid footing to continue to expand those improvements. No one is, no one project is ever gonna solve all of these issues.
So, and, and I, I actually agree with that, and I, and I respect that, right, so I, I take into consideration the mitigation already provided, um, by the development, certainly the, the Mass Work grants that are gonna improve the area. Um, and certainly the, the decrease in footprint, um, and, and the, the solutions you're putting in place to encourage more, um, you know, traffic on the rail. Um, a- as much as anything, I guess I just, I want us, and, and this is to McGonco as much as anybody, to think about what the next step is with mitigating some of the traffic coming in and out of this entire build-out one way. So if it's, if it's not addressed and we can't come to a, a great solution in this particular plan, it, it's certainly gonna continue to be a hot topic issue as we move from plan to plan to plan to plan. And I, I would like to see it somewhere or added to some kinda plan, I tried to have it added as a condition a while back, I still haven't seen anything or heard of it, it just seems like one of those things that everybody knows is an issue, but we don't address it, and we do that with a lot of projects, and then it's too late to address them at some point, so just, as far as that goes, I, I don't wanna dwell on that too much more right here. I do appreciate, like I said, some of the information given on the traffic study, I, I wanna just look back at, at some of my notes, have we approached the schools at all, um, just in general, to, to kinda get their feel of?
Well, again, I think there's, I think there's a little bit of a, um, we need to be clear, uh, uh, there are two projects that will be going forward simultaneously.
Mm-hmm.
If, um, upon the approval of the Lot One plan, and that is our development and the mitigation that we've committed to in connection with it, and the reconstruction of the MBTA access road. They're two separate projects, but they're obviously linked. So the Mass Works MBTA project, which is being engineered by Alan and Major, um, there was discussion at our roundtable about what to do in the area of the school. But those types of discussions are, are outside of our purview. You know, there's a forum right now for addressing those, and I think it goes through Nat and through the town manager and Alan and Major, as to how you wanna deal with, with, um, you know, traffic and parking and people who, um, are accessing the fields from that road. Um, so it will happen in this same timeframe, but it's, it's really nothing that we have any control over or say in.
Well, I certainly, Nat, I would like you to continue to look at that, I, I bring it up because we talked about timing of the lights, and, and we're specifically talking about the light at that corner, so.
Yeah.
Although they're, they're different, you guys tied them together by talking about, you know, potentially timing the light.
Well, I think they are tied together, and I'm not suggesting that it shouldn't be addressed, I'm just saying that there's a second forum that's going on in parallel with this one, um, that has to do with the reconstruction of the MBTA access road.
Alright. Um, and, and that's, that's pretty much all, like I said, I'm in agreement with the, uh, with the reduced parking as well. Um, we had talked about potentially, um, some electric car parking, I don't know if that was still on the table as an option for a build-out of such.
It is, it's something that we're talking about internally.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, go ahead, Nat?
So I think the, um, the notion of the elevator and
Yes.
um, expanding access or, or permitting access from the development to the transit site turns the development from a very good one to maybe even a landmark or something that's absolutely fantastic. And, um, you know, you had mentioned problems with snow and ice going downstairs, um, and I've noticed that other commuter rail stations in the Boston area and in other metropolitan areas, that sometimes they have covered stairs.
Mm-hmm.
Is that something that might be of interest? I know expense is obviously an issue, but the elevator can't be cheap to do, um, but maybe covered stairs is a possibility to enable the masses to get down quickly, and then you have the elevator for those few who may need it.
Well, I think, I think that, uh, given the feedback that we've gotten, we need to drill down into this elevator thing more.
Okay.
You know, and understand better what types of demands are likely to be placed on it, and what type of capacity we need to address that. There are a number of apartment communities that have been built immediately adjacent to train stations in greater Boston over the past ten years.
Right.
Um, you know, Woodland comes to mind, Newton.
Right, right.
It would not be hard, and I'll tell you right now, we will do this, to go and see how many people walk out of that apartment building at a single, uh, train arrival to, uh, you know, to go into town. And so I think we need to gather more information, uh, to be able to address it, but I wanna emphasize, I agree with the board completely, if we create a situation that frustrates people, we've outsmarted ourselves.
That's all I had for now, um, I wanted to open it up just to, I know Mark had a comment, or if anybody else in the public had a comment.
I'd be distracted by that, so I pointed it down.
Oh, Mark.
Oh, well, I'm sorry, but... There we go. Thank you.
Changed the ambiance for you, Mark.
Exactly. Mark, it's only forty-nine Hawthorne Road. Been around a long time for this, here, it's here, done, everything that's working up to this point, but I, I'm coming up with three, three sections. No, that is eight questions, I said sections. First of one is the Mass Transit Road, Mass Works to make it a complete street. It sounds like if it's gonna be coordinated, it's gonna be coordinated to make the street wider on both sides, to make it a two-lane, safer, and a bike and walk safer with the, with the widths. That's a major improvement from, um, since being there, having the traffic going up and down, it's the first time I saw that, and that's a, it's a good idea if it does work. Second would be the, um, traffic study itself, with the areas that, that they took examples of, with so many cars back and forth, hourly rate, PM peaks and stuff like that. Three hundred and sixty-five days a year, four, two, two, two or three towns coming through, four ninety-five, Mass Bike, Route Nine, everybody's coming through, coming through, all the streets, it's not just one spot. But you got Franklin Road, you got the Howell Streets, and you got, um, the, uh, Western Nursery, Cross Road, Cross Street, Hockbentown, all, all that coming through, and then you got Framham coming into Asher, going to Hockbentown, coming that way. And then you got the Marathon coming through all that, that way. So that traffic is gonna be jumping up and down, and, and this Phase One up there on, on that lot there is worth the time to get that traffic, but it's still gonna be the surroundings. Three, and everybody likes that, the elevator, I call that, if, in old school, it's the Star Trek transporter, transporter. You put them in, disintegrate, send them down, there they are. But I think of it, I think of it as an ugly thing, because it's just not, it's not worth having people there, and it's for residents, but if the elderly wants to use it, they can. I would have not put an age limit, I would not put anything like that on it, but people that live in there, yeah. And I know that, um, height, uh, Ashen State Height bylaws says thirty-five feet. Uh, what we showed was fifty-two, sixty-something feet. Is our bylaws gonna work with that, or is he gonna be separate, that he's gonna be, uh, cause it's new, there's gotta be grandfather or anything like that? Pleasant Street is about as long as the Mass.
Uh, Mark?
Yes?
If I may, Rail Transit District, um, bylaw height limit is different from the other portion of the bylaw.
When did we pass that?
Some time ago.
Oh, okay.
Was it, was it about, was it oh-three?
Oh-six.
Oh-six?
That wa- that was the, um, the first, the JPI years that we tried passing that? Okay, okay. Yep, so that, it was, it was, it was that time, okay, so I, I played and all forgot. And, um, everything, everything has gotta be taking time. And the school, what I would like to see with traffic is like what they do in Millis, cause I drove one, one oh-nine, is two or three diff- two or three lights in sync. Cause twenty seconds difference is only one car going through, passing it, that's all it is. And by slowing that down, and for the idea, we, we've been trying for years on one twenty-six to make it safer and everything, to get the traffic flowing better. One thirty-five could use that, that's one or two more lights, one coming out with the middle high school is, and the other one by Franklin Street, Olive Street, those would be the two primes, because you can regulate that traffic even better. And I'm not looking past Lot One, and I know that Chairman, you said something about a complete build-out, not, not look past Lot One first, before the future gets away too fast.
Sure.
One of the thi- one of the things that our new assistant town planner's been working so hard on in regard to many of our projects is digging back into the conditions and the covenants, and, um, putting all of that language in one place. And in front of you, you have two sheets where the print is incredibly small, but we will be sending you Excel documents and we can blow it up. But you have one for, um, the RTD, in fact, and you have the entire covenant summarized there, um, you have the entire decision from six nineteen oh-eight summarized there, you have the amended covenant seven, summarized there. And I suggest that between now and next time you go, it might be worth, uh, checking it out and, and doing a little review. We have them for other developments as well, but worth taking a look at.
Was a smaller font available?
If you even wanted a chance of reading it.
Three point five. There's a, there's a drop-down box.
We had this one, we looked at this covenant recently.
Yeah.
Do you, you just amended the covenant and, but it goes hand in hand with the development agreements too, they can't be taken apart.
Yes.
David Cromo, twenty, Russell Hill Road, um, has the, uh, did the fire chief have any comments about the elevator? The fire chief?
He's already called it the elevator.
Hmm?
No, it's time, just in terms of public safety, rescuing people when it gets dark.
They have changed the name.
Um, who's responsible for, uh, clearing snow, um, from the MBTA sidewalk? Is that the town or the MBTA?
From the MBTA access road?
Right, assuming this, this improvement goes through.
So currently it's the MBTA, um, but the development agreement says that, uh, once the, once it's completed with the new, all the sidewalks and everything are done, that the town will go to town meeting and accept the roadway, but the, um, owners of the land in the RTD are paying seventy-five thousand dollars a year towards the ongoing maintenance of the roadway and sidewalks.
Thank you. Um, and I guess I may have lost the thread on, on the proposed, or what you're looking into for the emergency access, um, the improvements, um, through to the lot of the MBTA station. Does that, uh, obviate the need for the other access, or the, would the other, the originally proposed access still be in place as a?
One or the other.
One or the other, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alright. Lloyd, you have something else you wanted to add before we?
Well, I just wanted to, um, um, make a suggestion, if I may, on, uh, how, going forward. Um, as I mentioned when we started, um, it's our hope and expectation that we will be working with Tom Houston over the next couple of weeks, um, to go through his, his comprehensive peer review, um, and reach consensus, uh, between the engineers, um, on the various points, and we are quite confident that we'll be able to do that. Um, I know at the last meeting, there was some discussion about how precious few meetings there are, uh, between now and the end of the year as we get into the holidays. I think that, um, the next meeting will probably focus on the peer review and the technical portions of it, um, and we fully expect to be able to have that completed by Thanksgiving. So, um, not knowing the policy of the board, I wanted to at least make the suggestion, um, that if it was possible to have a, I'll call it a special meeting, but a meeting dedicated to reviewing this project the week after Thanksgiving, um, I think it would be very helpful from our perspective to be able to gather the board's comments, um, and continue to move this process forward.
So I'm, I'm certainly in support of it, I think we, we should, I think we, uh, with the effort you guys have put in, in the scope of the project, we certainly wanna do what we can to move it forward. The week after Thanksgiving, I mean, is that how long you need, I actually thought we were gonna meet before that, so.
What if we did the tenth and just didn't put anything else on there?
The what?
The actual meeting that we have scheduled.
Went to the tenth?
What, what if we did that and scheduled nothing else?
If I may, for us, it's getting very late, um, and our hope is that if...
December third?
No, I think we gotta have one before December tenth, I, I...
December third?
Yeah.
December third, so the one thing we do need to do, um...
John, can you make it?
That's a good question.
Cause we need, cause we need...
Right, I was gonna say, we gotta confirm with Vanessa as well, who missed today. John?
Yeah, if, um, if she, like I said, if she can't make it, I'll make it, but the, uh, I'll have to cancel something else, the third.
Uh, what about the, are the special permit hearings open at this time?
Uh, they are.
Um...
First and second work.
Is there any reason for us, uh, my inclination would be to finish off at least the parking reduction tonight, does anyone have any reason not to close and vote on that tonight?
I like it. Uh, I prefer the second.
Hmm?
December second, Wednesday, if you guys can do it though.
Does Lisa and Lloyd and December second work for you guys as well, or is that a bad day?
Like, there's a board of selectmen meeting that night, so...
We couldn't be in this room.
Um, that's the, I'm here for that, so...
I can't do the first either.
We, we couldn't meet downstairs on the second?
Certainly could.
I mean, uh, I think...
We could even meet in the library.
Can go up and down, well, if you meet down here, then I can do both.
Which time's the selectmen meeting, six?
Um, I think they're gonna have, uh, probably have an executive session, six thirty-seven, something like that.
That's when they need you?
Yeah. Yeah.
And then they get out?
Then I get out.
You done? So what would that be, like seven fifteen, seven thirty? On the second? Does that work for you guys? Works for me, and they did, the other thing, we probably knocked the other stuff out tonight if you guys want. So the second, December second, that's a Wednesday.
Maybe that's better for you. Either day works for me, so.
Yep, seven thirty P M.
All right, let's shoot for December second at seven thirty.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Are you?
Yeah, let's try to do that.
I, I see, I have heard nothing but positive things on the, the positive comments towards reducing the parking requirements.
Agree.
And I think we should proceed with closing and approving that special permit tonight. So I move to close the hearing on the special permit for parking reduction.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Give me a second, Matt.
John, I move to grant the special permit for parking reduction.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
How about the slope?
We should talk about it. What exactly does the special permit cover on the slope reduction? What does it allow them to do that they couldn't otherwise do?
It's right on.
It's three to one, three to one instead of two to one. Was there another, was that brought up by TCG as well?
Number sixty-three. Site slopes are graded at two, two to one ratio, two feet horizontal for one feet vertical. A special permit is required, five point seven point three point one for slopes deeper than three to one.
In granting this special permit, would it, should we, would we do it in general for the whole site? Or would we need to specify exactly which slopes?
Did you have a marked up plans?
Well, they are marked on the plans, and I would also suggest that if the board saw fit to grant the special permit, it doesn't remove us from having to satisfy your peer review engineer. So all it would do, I believe, would set the stage for allowing a two to one permit.
My concern about voting on this tonight is if the, is if it's for the specific slopes on the plan and then moving forward as you look at changes to the plans, you know, for whatever reason, such as eliminating the high street access, you gotta adjust something for fire access. And all of a sudden, you got another slope that's changing from three to one to being slightly steeper or, or some, moving a slope somewhere. I'd be concerned that we then have to have a new special permit process for that change or a modification.
I would look to town council for advice on that.
Well, you would, because it's modifying the special permit. So I guess I would, I would suggest, I, I don't know what Tom Houston's comments are with regard to the slopes, and so I think that there would be two, I would be concerned that you have clearly identified.
They, they will certainly change, there's no question about it.
It seems like we can hold off on it, it's not a.
Yeah, I, I think we need to hold off on it until we've got nearly the final plan.
Yeah, certainly, let's look at it in the end and.
What about the, the other site alteration special permit? Is that, is that a moot point?
They haven't made that application yet, so.
Because they're not sure.
Tom pointed out that you needed a site alteration special permit because you're altering more than five thousand square feet. Did you see that in his comments?
Hundred cubic yards.
I think that's a stormwater management permit through the conservation commission only.
No, it's section, his comments, I think it's.
Five point eight point two.
Right, so he commented that he believed that you needed a site alteration special permit.
It's number sixty-five in the comments.
So maybe you wanna just look at it and if.
We did, we looked at that when we, before we applied in, in very much detail, and I believe that that one, is it, is it, that land alteration permit is exempt without building permit, which we would be getting for the project.
That makes sense.
We made our review list.
I don't think we should do one of those, other than, one of the only.
When we meet with Mr. Houston, we'll vet that with him.
That's what the theme is. The only time we had to do these is when it was the only thing they were doing on a project. Like when we were filling in that swimming pool in that backyard.
Yeah, so this isn't the land disturbance permit, it's a little different, but maybe, I think you should review it in that way before the next hearing, if you have to apply.
Absolutely.
We would also, the other one that was pointed out was, if there's any alterations on High Street, we need a scenic road hearing and potentially a special permit for High Street for any.
Permits, permits.
I, I have a question in that regard, really for you, Lisa, where this is a site plan modification and the emergency access road is not being altered at all. Was that issue addressed as part of the original permit? And if we're not altering it, would we need to reapply?
Scenic roads, special permit didn't exist at the time.
Okay.
Neither did site alteration.
You just have to look if you're disturbing any rock walls within the right of way or cutting down any trees within the right of way.
Got it. Okay.
Eight inches in diameter or more.
I just remembered another thing I should have said earlier. With, general comments, the bike trail, it would be nice if we could have at least the section from High Street to the MBTA access road more formally mapped out as part of this process of where that's intended to go, particularly so we can see where it's crossing your lot. I think that needs to be in the plan going forward.
Okay.
I certainly appreciate the effort you guys have put forth. I, I do think it's a good product. I think we have a nice plan in front of us and just some minor details. Do I have a motion to move this to December second or continue?
At what time are we meeting?
Seven thirty.
Um, so moved?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a nice Thanksgiving.
And that motion was for the special permit, the site plan review and all, all open things, yeah.
Everything. Yes, take two minutes and then set up for Village of America.
The O A.
Thank you, welcome back. It is now nine forty-three and we are going to continue the discussion of a site plan review for Village of America Phase Seven.
Yes.
Okay. Please Nat.
Okay, so a peer review was done, we went through the peer review points at last meeting. I know you're prepared to respond to the points that were made, I'm sure modifications were made, so maybe that would be a good place to start.
Uh huh.
And there are a couple of other items that we've been discussing that we can get into after that, but why don't we start at that point?
Fine, thank you.
Sure.
So the plan you see before you, and I have submitted revisions to the, to the board, represent the reply to certain items within the peer review letter that were pertinent to the actual proposed project. There were, there were several items that had to do with the, were questions regarding what needed to be done in accordance with the entire project as far as stormwater and things like that, but the, all those issues really pertain to the entire project as a whole, as everything was already considered in the design. But what I, what I did do, majority of the items were able to be addressed. First of all, there was a, there was a concern that runoff from these units here and something over, some units over here were not really being addressed, that it was, would be allowed to be discharged onto the commercial property or the, of the multifamily, multi-use property. So what we did was we added catch basin here, here, and here, some additional drain lines, so now the entire site will be collected onsite and all the, all the runoff will be collected and attenuated and not be allowed to spill off significantly onto any of the , onto the lot. Additionally, we took the main drive aisle, which was at eighteen feet width, and we enlarged that to twenty feet. The other driveways we left at eighteen, but we made this one a little bit more, because it would experience a little bit more traffic than, than the others. We then adjusted the access to some of the interior units and eliminated a couple of the, the actual connections to Queen Isabella and America Boulevard, specifically this location here, this location here, this location here. So we took about, we took like four driveways connections away from the direct access and built them into the interior traffic pattern. Also, regarding some of the discussions that were, that we had, we showed the existing fence, showed its location, it's there now, this existing stockade fence that, that needs to be either updated or repaired. And then we proposed, we've added additional fencing from where that fence terminates along the entire perimeter of the proposed work till it connects to the existing fence in this location here. So that the entire site construction process will be contained by a construction fence. Also, we designated the existing gate on Chestnut Street to be used as the construction access for the development of this site, so the construction vehicles will not be entering and exiting the site using either Queen Isabella or America Boulevard, so that will eliminate the, the large trucks and equipment in the areas where the, where the majority of the residences currently are. So the existing, there's an existing thirty-foot wide gate here on Chestnut Street, we're proposing to use that as our main access to the development of this project during the construction We, we, we added some calculations regarding recharge requirements and we've shown, we've added, we've included those to show that we have more than adequate recharge available. The recharge, each unit, each building is going to have four separate recharge chambers, systems for each of the downspouts. Using those, they, they provide over fifteen thousand cubic feet of storage to be able to allow to recharge the, using, assuming this is an A soil, you know, because it says it was an A, we're only required to recharge six thousand cubic feet, so we're, we'll provide more than adequate recharge in this area for, for the development site. Really, that's pretty much the, the changes that we've proposed with regarding the development of the site itself.
I want to talk to you just about a couple of issues that we raised vis a vis email. So you did talk about the fence and you did present a strategy for upgrading the fence and that's something that, you know, Jim and I have been talking about, we can certainly go and do a site inspection and, and take a look at that. So that's, that's one issue, I think we're moving, we're moving in a direction on that. Another is in regard to the dust. And is it possible for you to give us, and, and I, I know you've made some changes vis a vis the dust, but I'm wondering if you could give us a plan, or, or some sort of statement that describes your plan for addressing the issue as it currently stands and also for construction in, in the new phase? Is that possible?
You mean in terms of a, a plan like this, or?
Not, not a, not a graphic plan, but a dust?
O N M plan?
Sure, yes. Right now, what we've been doing is we have a number of sprinklers that have been keeping the piles moist. And as I mentioned to you today, the, I haven't been there every day since, since the last meeting, but probably half a dozen times, and I, I haven't seen any evidence of there being a dust problem there. In addition to that, we've been sweeping the street and keeping that clear on a regular basis. And in fact, this afternoon, with, you know, the, the rain that we had, it was, there was some mud out in the road and that's been swept this evening.
I think it also, that, that sounds great, and I think it would also be helpful though, as we've just said, an O N M plan.
Sure, yes, yep.
Moving forward.
Absolutely.
I think that would be important. And I know that noise has been another issue maybe within the O N M plan, we can, you know, we can talk about construction noise, that could be another, that could be another aspect of it.
Sure, I think it, one of the things that we're trying to, we're trying to get the, from the manufacturers of the different pieces of equipment that we have on site, their specifications in terms of noise, and I'm quite certain that we'll find that they all comply with all of the state and federal regulations in terms of noise.
Okay, I think that would be important for us to see.
Sure.
Another issue that I know we've touched base about are the, are the, the vehicles themselves. You know, one thing I know that's going on right now is a lot of material is being taken off the site, and that's because there is the stipulation that the site needs to be roughly graded to prepare it for the next, next phase, and our aim is to have this done by December fifteenth. And so the first thing is, you know, you do have these large vehicles leaving the site and navigating areas that are also navigated by residential folks, and I'm wondering what we can do in terms of safety to help coordinate all of these very large vehicles and also, you know, everybody else's, you know, cars.
Sure. Right now, the, the way that truck traffic has been working is they come in up Queen Isabella, up to the intersection with America Boulevard, and then they turn off the road. And there's really just the one building, Building Forty on Queen Isabella that, that they drive past. The, and they turn around at the, the first unit that's on the corner of Queen Isabella and America Boulevard. And as Bob mentioned, what we're proposing to do is use the, the main gate off of Chestnut Street and eliminate the, the truck traffic on, on Queen Isabella. So at, right now, today, they're really only driving by two, two buildings, but what we'd like to be able to do is set up an operation where we can come in off of Chestnut Street and also the, the other question that, that we have is in terms of being able to backhaul material that, that's suitable for, for the site.
Right.
There's about, there was when we started about sixty thousand yards of unsuitable material, which is a lot of fines that can't be used as fill for the, for the site in terms of the driveways or the, the buildings themselves. So that material is, is what we've been trying to remove, and at the same time, what we'd like to do is, is bring back material that can be used for that, that purpose of fill and.
To have it roughly graded.
Right.
This is something that you and I have been talking about, so one of the observations we made was that we saw trucks going into the site and out of the site, and so I touched base with Jim about this, and you know, so I guess, you know, what was happening is the unsuitable fill was being moved out and the fill to level it off and roughly grade it was making it so that it would be moved in. And I said, Jim, would it be possible to hold off on bringing the fill back in until we sort of get a grip on what's going on here? And, and he did. But you know, I think, I think it seems reasonable, you know, especially because all of this is happening now, could probably be, it would be completed by December fifteenth.
That's correct.
Right, to have that fill brought in to roughly grade it.
Correct.
Now that we sort of have an idea of this process. You know, I just, it's something that should be brought to your attention, but I think it makes, I think it's reasonable to ha, to have that done between now and December There were two other things that I wanted to talk to you about. This is something that DPW brought to my attention. Are residents being required to water their new lawns on a daily basis in order to maintain their warranties?
Not required. What I think happens is when they, they buy a unit, they're told to maintain the, the shrubbery and the landscaping that, that's been installed. And, but there's not a requirement that they, that they have sprinklers out there or anything like that. You could just as easily water it with a watering can, I think. There's a, a number of shrubs though that are required by, by your board in terms of the landscaping that get installed, and it's just a question of trying to keep those, those vibrant and alive, not having to go back and replace them.
It's very important that we all get on the same page with the DPW.
Uh huh.
In terms of water restrictions and obligations and such. And so I want to be sure before this process concludes that, you know, we touch base with David Minugian to be sure that we're doing what we should be doing.
One of, one of the things that was brought up at the last meeting and that we're planning on doing is trying to use the, uh, existing basin and sink a shallow well there to be able to irrigate this phase.
Okay, okay. Okay, that's good for you.
Thank you Nat. Comments from the board?
Um, so just loo, looking at a slightly larger picture, there's this undeveloped future mixed-use lot with the horseshoe-shaped building. So as you're building this, you're driving through that lot, is my understanding. Unless you are immediately proceeding after this to construction on that lot, I would like the process for this to have that lot be stabilized, not be fenced in as a construction area, but be open and grassy. Whether you use, you know, a wildflower mix or whatever, you know, some, something to make it look like it, it's a normal thing there until such time as construction commences. Would something like that be reasonable? Do you thi?
Yeah, except like, we would like to, to get going on the, that, that next phase really while this is under construction.
Is that U-shaped building, I, I remember when we did the, the site plan approval for that, has that lapsed, or do?
I think that, that has, but the other, the other one where we built the, those three smaller buildings, that was an amended site plan. There's, there's been, the, the first site plan had two U-shaped buildings.
Right, that was the good one.
Well, uh, then we went back with the, a modification and, and only modified that, that one building.
Right.
And that one, I think, since we started construction on it, it has, it still has some life to it. But I, our intent would be to come back with a, a plan that I think is probably a little more viable, similar to the one that we had before the board several years ago, that met with some resistance, and I think we just didn't do a very good job of explaining how it would work. And I think we, we'd like to get, get back and try and get a plan that, that both the board and, and us feel is a workable one.
My, my, my thinking at this point is to put in a condition that before you get occupancy permits on the last, you know, several buildings or something like that on, on this section, that that section needs to be made presentable. But of course, if you then come for a site plan on that section, that would supersede this decision, would be the, the intention.
Uh huh, sure.
I'd be in agreement with that, and I, I would, I would ask that you actually, I like the idea of an access road from Chestnut, but I would ask that it be, you know, along the, the line of the building, so there's as much green space as possible to the left of it while it's being stabilized, right? So just depending on where you put the access road to come into the property.
Well, I, I think probably by the time they're on that, they wouldn't necessarily be using that.
You said if, if they come back, it would be superseded, I agree with you.
Oh yeah.
If they don't come back with that though, we're going to be left with.
Yeah.
An open pit.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, so the, the intention would be that if you finish this and are not in the middle of other construction on this site, that anybody driving by it or living here, it would no longer appear to be an active construction site.
Understood.
So that the, the conditions on, on this will require that, and then those would get superseded by whatever you're going forward with if, if you come back to actually do additional work.
Sure.
And what I was referencing just was where the proposed entrance for the construction road was, I was hoping to see it moved over, so it wasn't so right on American Boulevard, that's all.
Even closer to the other boats, on the south side of the other building.
Yes, on the south side, exactly. Just, I, I don't know if you put it there for a reason, or if it was just convenient to draw it there, but I.
Well, the existing gate is there.
Okay.
There's just a construction thirty-foot wide gate, you know, breaking in the fence and now there's an actual gate there, so we just, we utilize the existing gate. If you do a Google Earth, maybe you can actually see, you know, there is a, there is somewhat of a traveled way that you can actually visualize is what happened from here to here, so, you know, we, we continue to use that.
And that, that area by the way is paved and is, was part of the original concrete plant operation, which is why the, the gate is there and the pavement is there.
Okay, if it, if it's paved, then I wouldn't worry about it, I'll, I'll take a look at it as well. I, I know the fence you're talking about, I, I thought it was a temporary fence actually, so I'll.
I got some questions and some comments. So you're representing the owner?
Yes.
And you're, you guys are the engineering outfit?
We are the engineering outfit.
You're the engi?
We're the developers.
You're with the developer?
Correct.
You're, you're the engineer?
Yes.
Okay. And T E C is our peer review, correct? Okay, I'm just trying to get my bearings, because it, I always, I feel like on this particular project, there's different people I see every time. So, don't take it personal. The, I'm gonna ask a couple of questions, see if Nat knows some of these answers, and I want to, I want to show you the pattern on this site. We had specific, very specific, down to the station, little spots we were pointing out on the site plans, last couple of phases that we approved, that had deadlines, and it was related to, not just our desire, but it was related to a lot of the residents that were, I would say extremely upset, is probably to put it nicely, on a regular basis, they felt like they got sold a bill of goods. And my, it's, this, this has been an, an extremely frustrating project for me to watch, because oftentimes we're working with some developers that put a lot of time and effort into what they do, they take a lot of pride in what they do, you probably just saw a couple of groups tonight, and we vet those projects, we trust the professionals to do their thing, and then oftentimes, you know, we, we make decisions and, and we move on. And with this particular project and the pattern that I think has been established from, I don't, maybe it's the owner, maybe it's developer, maybe whoever, I mean, I know it's the same company in this particular case, but the pattern is, that's great, give me the permit, we're going to do whatever we want, we're going to do whatever we want afterwards. So it causes distrust in the community, causes distrust in this board, and so everything we do has to slow down to look at the details, cross our t's, dot our i's with, and I'll say with you guys, I know it's not you two, but it, it's the group, so this is, this is the pattern with this developer. So now I'm looking at this and I'm going, all right, let's go through peer review now, and we're going to look at every single item, okay? Because we have, I literally sat here face to face, dead in the eye to the engineer, I forgot his name with the glasses, and he was here like, okay, we'll do this and we'll do that, and we promised we're going to do it, and, and it was like a, I would bet we're probably behind now on some of these other promises, right? It was like promises every time, do you know, any idea where we stand?
I have a punch list.
Okay.
That I'll share with you, that our inspectional engineer has, has created.
Uh huh.
Of items, of outstanding items.
Uh huh.
And then I can share with you those, the, the list and we can talk about them.
Okay. And, and several of these items, these aren't just like beautification things, some of these are pretty significant safety type things, like the sidewalks weren't in at one point in time, then we convinced them to finally put the binder in, they put the binder in and all the caps were up high and the people were tripping over. So I'm, I'm not trying to be petty, you know, usually I feel like I'm a pretty reasonable guy when I'm, work with people, but I really do feel like we got lied to on several occasions, and I don't usually come off like that, and most people, I think my fellow members would agree with me here, I, I give people the benefit of the doubt, but I feel like this is a group that we're talking to that has no regard for the town, they have no regard for this board, and they're going to do whatever they want, okay? And I know legally you've sliced and diced this properly so that we can focus just on this particular phase, and hopefully John will stop thinking about these other phases, but I just want to let you know, the context is, we're dealing with somebody that's most likely going to take advantage of us, so that's kind of the lens that I'm looking at this project from, so, sorry for that, I just want to let you know. And I, and you, I'm guessing you'll probably, you'll let Mike know and let, let all us know where we stand on these existing projects, right?
I'll let you know.
Okay. So maybe I'll jump into a couple of things on peer review if you feel like it's the appropriate time, unless you want to save the comments.
Sure, if you got specific items you want to touch on.
Yeah, just, um, have you, have you guys, have they responded yet to this version of peer review, which was October sixteenth?
Well, you, you've seen it and this is.
Yes, I actually, I submitted a response letter.
Yes.
It has that.
To the next page.
Yep, you got it there.
Okay. So I, this is the first time I've seen this, so I'll have to.
Okay.
So there, there's several things, I mean, I started making notes as far as, I'll have to see their response on this, but a few of the biggest things right off the bat were, I agree with press a hundred percent, if you're going to access through another phase, then that, then you therefore are kind of activating that phase, so therefore I would think that would make sense to stabilize these. We did the same thing on our one thirty-three, I think, West Union, but what we did in the front of that project was, was made sure they stabilized it naturally so that it fits into the landscape, of course, there's no landscape there now, but.
Was it two fifty, you mean?
Two fifty, yeah, two fifty West Union, yep. This, because what I was going to ask is, do you plan on building all of these at once and then start to sell them?
Typically what we do is we build them one at a time and sell them as we build.
Yeah, you sell them as you go, but how would they, if they, so you'd expect people that buy like, let's say unit number seventy-nine, or some, something, one of the four and the seventy-nine, they'd come in through this kind of dirty construction area, drive in through there, I don't think that's even possible, so what you're going to do is you're essentially going to start taking down that construction fence as you go, if you build it like that. You'll have to, right?
Yeah, basically what you would assume is that you would start like constructing this main, you know, this main drive area here.
Yeah.
Getting it up to five, and everything else sort of feeds off of it.
Right.
You might, you might open up the fence to just, you know, these two locations here.
Yeah.
So that, so that, you know.
But it, but it's not essentially like this enclosed, the way you present it with your fence plan?
Yeah.
Is you have this fence enclosing it, I guess it's almost like a triangle.
Well, it's actually closed, the fence is, is this fence right here, and we just, and this is the fence here, we're going to.
But that kind of implies that everybody else around it isn't going to have to deal with this till later, till it's built. But what you're basically saying is, all right, we're going to access it from the front, that's where all the mess and the, and the.
Right, most of the mess is, most of the mess occurs in the actual site preparation of the site. You're going to come in, you're going to get all the grading done, you're going to get the site up to grade, now you're going to start putting in all your utilities, you know, all your structures, all your manhole, all your water line, all your utilities are in the ground. Now the remainder is, is to just basically put, pave driveways and then dig cellar holes in the houses. So there's not a lot of major heavy construction that occurs after that. So, so the idea is during the major construction phase, the area of removing material, bringing in material, grading the site, installing utilities, you know, in all the structures that are necessary, that, that will all occur through here, because that's a lot of trucks, that's a lot of ongoing constant activity. And then once, once you get that to the point, now you start, you would, you'd probably, you would build this, this road, you'd start to construct the driveway areas. And here again, it's, you know, like these units here, well, you may start with this unit because it, it has its own separate driveways and its locations, so the fence would be removed in this area.
Uh huh.
You know, and this thing, they, you know, some of these others, like these here can come. But once, once you get the main. But once, once you get the main, um, construction, the site preparation work done, then, then, you know, the, the the fence is just something that, that you would, you would like, is, well, unfortunately, it's, it's there to keep the neighbor, you know, the kids from coming in and playing or whatever, and, uh, uh, in, uh, within the development site, because you wanna probably keep them out of the units as you're building them, you know, it's more of a security issue than it is anything else.
I got it, so, so, but essentially what you're saying is the fence, um, I know you need some flexibility to do what you need to do, but, but my point is, uh, that fence, you don't intend for that to stay up very long. And, from the sounds of it, you can't, there's no way for you to have that fence up the whole time. You're basically saying, well, once we're done with grading, fence comes down, but not necessarily, only in certain parts. So, uh, it doesn't really accomplish what you're probably hoping it'll accomplish, which is keeping the kids out of the construction site. And it doesn't accomplish the, the hopes of pretty much everybody, I, I kinda stink she did the development this way, you started in the back and brought it forward, as opposed to the other way around, cause unfortunately you hit hard times, it slowed down, and everybody's had to look at the, the mother of all piles for a decade now. So, I think you probably should phase this, as far as what you, and, and show us what your plan is by phase within there. Does that make sense? And, um, show us at what point what's gonna happen. Cause this could go, I mean, hopefully you'll sell, you'll sell quick, people move in, everything gets stabilized, um, hopefully that front doesn't become an eyesore to them, cause I think you're really gonna, um, frustrate a lot of people, as far as that goes, but, um, maybe, maybe the thought would be, see some proposal from them on phasing of what happens within this section. Do you, do you have any ideas, Lisa?
No, I mean, I think that would be right, as part of the, he has, they have to propose to a phasing plan, um, bring in a phasing plan at the next meeting, and show how your fence is gonna move as you do your construction.
Within that, within that phasing, I think, um, we gotta kind of revisit the schedules, cause I believe there was still, wasn't there a little bit more infrastructure? We have to look into this, as to what we, what we negotiated before. There was, there was one other area, do you remember it offhand?
There's, there's significant infrastructure that's not done yet.
Okay, so I'd like to see that, I think we should see that as part of this phasing, and, and be specific. If, if you don't, you can probably catch up with that, he has all the records before.
I'll share, I'll share those with everybody.
Okay.
If I can interrupt, I, I think the, the infrastructure, the, the one thing that we haven't done is get this material out of here and get that, that area stabilized, and, and other than that, I think we, in fact, your requirement is that we take down the fence, and we've been holding off doing that because we wanted to get this, this area stabilized. But the other requirement was that we pave America Boulevard all the way around, which we did, uh, last fall. Um, and we met the deadline, which I think was sometime in October. The next deadline that we have is to finish, put the remainder, remainder of the finish on Queen Isabella and the, uh, the rest of America Boulevard, which I think is tied to, uh, the last occupancy in Phase Six, which hasn't occurred yet. Uh, so I don't, I don't think that there's anything significant, other than the stabilization of this area that we're talking about that hasn't been completed on time in accordance with, uh, your requirements.
But where are you in Phase Six?
We're just, we're just putting in the last foundation.
So, we'll find out.
Well, let's see the, let's see the information, we have that, we can certainly, if you can come with that, Nat.
Is, is what's going on out there, is that just site prep for this phase, or are you guys screening loam and, and, you know, uh, doing other stuff out there for mining? Yeah, just doing some, other, uh, stuff, screening for other areas, not just that site. Looks like you're running like a big site operation, like you're screening loam and you're like, the, the, the big block wall, I guess it was probably from the concrete plant?
Mm-hmm.
Where it drops down and part of it's kind of, uh, coming down and that, are you guys hammering those, those blocks, um, what?
No, the, the, the site operation that's occurring now is, is a lot of, uh, as I said, a lot of fine material. Originally it was about sixty thousand yards, at this point I think it's probably down to about forty-five or so. That is, is a very fine material, that, uh, um, a lot of it I suspect is from when the, the concrete plant was in operation, there was a wash plant there. And where the detention basin is now, were, um, a series of, uh, settling ponds. So as they washed the material, all the fines would fall out, and they would go into these ponds that they would dredge out, uh, probably two or three times a year. And all that material is, uh, left behind, and that, that's the material that, uh, we're trying to get out.
So the, the, the big blocks that are missing with, that are kind of coming down off of the, the steep drop off of America Boulevard there?
Mm-hmm.
What are you, what are you doing with those? Are you, are you, it, it looks like you're break, are you breaking them up? I mean, are you, it look, there was, there was a rock pile, and I drove out by there, I could see there's, there's, there's a, looked like you, you might have been hammering them or something, and there was, you know, uh, looked like a large pile that was broken up there. It looked like more than just, hey, we're prepping this site, you know, gonna ex-fill the, the bad stuff and infill the new stuff and, and get it ready to go. It looked like you're, you know, you're, you got a big storage yard out there, you're, you're running, you know, you got a huge, like, loam pile out there, it, it, it looks like it's more than just getting this site ready to go. And you said you're keeping the fence up, but the, the fence isn't really up. I mean, there's, there's, there's large areas that are missing, and, and, you know, it's a big drop right there.
It's crazy.
And, the, the way you have it set up, where you're, 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 there, there was a, a area where I pulled off to park, and, and I'm glad I stopped, because it was about an eight to ten foot drop where you guys had just hogged out on the other side. And there was nothing where, I mean, anyone could have pulled their car up, and they're dropping straight off it, over on, on the side of the Queen Isabella side over there. I think, I mean, I, I don't know, to, to me, it just looked like there was something else going on there, and it, it just, you know, you, if you're doing that stuff, you should have some protection up right now, and, and, and the, the dilapidated fence on that side there, I don't, I, it, I, I don't know, it, it, the, the whole thing is just looking-
Embarrassing.
It, it, it doesn't, it, yeah, it doesn't look good, and I can, I can see why the neighbors are upset, and I can totally see why John is saying, hey, you know, we don't like to do this, we don't wanna put you guys through the wringer, we'd rather you guys just show up, nice plan, okay, boom, make it happen. But it's, it, it, it was a disaster out there.
Yep, I, well, I think the-
Well, are you, are you, the blocks, are you guys hammering those? I mean, are, are, what, what's happening with the blocks that are coming down?
Uh, I'm sure that we will hammer them at some point in time, I don't think we have a hammer on the job now, and, uh-
Have you been hammering them?
We have in the past, sure.
Okay, so, that's, that's probably where a lot of noise is coming from, I mean, that's, that's-
Yeah, but that is-
Hammering, that's, I mean, that's, that's, you guys out there hammering all day, that's, that's unpleasant, I mean, that's, it, is it, well, it, it could, I, I just, I feel like, if you guys are, you're, you're, they're, they're blocks that are clearly movable, I don't know what they are, maybe they're two by three, or, or concrete blocks out there, that they're, they have a, I guess it was a retaining wall that is now, it's coming down, and you guys are hammering them. If you guys are, and then you're taking them off-site, and I guess you use them elsewhere at another project or something, um, I don't think that's the, the right place to be hammering those blocks, I mean, take, you know, get an excavator out there, put them, you know, put them, get them out of there and hammer them someplace else, rather than where these people gotta hear them all day long, that's, I mean, it's, it's just not right.
I agree, and that, and I, and I don't think that's been going on for, uh, since whenever the, uh, number of town officials came out, out to the site. And I think things have, uh, stopped since then. That was, I don't know, probably a month or so ago.
Yeah, it, it, it was, it was, it was probably about a week and a half ago, I said, I, I saw the, the rock piles there, and clearly, it was from the blocks, it looked like you guys hammered them, um, yeah.
Did you, um, make a statement last meeting that you guys were done hammering on the site?
Yes.
So, so those, those blocks won't be hammered?
But, so you're gonna load the, the four blocks?
If we're done, we're done, right, that's the expectation, certainly.
Yeah. Yep.
So any blocks that come down now, you're not gonna hammer them there, you're just gonna load them and take them someplace else, hammer them, do whatever you're doing with them?
Yeah, oh, we may, may end up using them, uh, uh, as, uh, some retaining wall, uh, sections in some areas. But yeah, there's no intention to continue hammering.
And is it, how's that wall, I mean, is it structural for America Boulevard, I mean, is it do, cause it's coming down?
Mm-hmm.
And, and, you know, you got, you got a little ways to the road, but then it's a big drop there. Is that, I mean, is that wall required to, to, to hold it up, I mean, are you gonna, what's going on there to, to make sure that, you know, that's, you, you don't get a big washout or, you know, cave in on that side there?
Yep, uh, well, on the, uh, the, um, grading plan, that, that's all getting filled up, and those, that, that first building there that's at the, uh, at the intersection, that's, you know, the driveways coming in right off of, uh-
Oh, I know where the, the, the final grade's gonna be.
Yep.
I'm just, I'm, I'm saying that right now, where, where it is currently, where they had the retaining wall, you know, with the, with the big concrete blocks, three by fives, whatever they are, they're big. Um, I'm assuming they did that to, to, to hold that in place, and now you can see areas, it doesn't look like by design, or it's kind of coming down, and, and then you guys broke them up. It, is that, I mean, is that, I guess Nat, maybe it might be a question for you, is it something that, you know, when that, as, as those are coming down, is it gonna be something that could affect the, you know, along America Boulevard there?
As the, as the piles are, are coming down?
Well, just, just from that side caving in, I mean, is there, is there, is there potential for that?
Before the finished grade?
Right, right, the, I mean, once the finished grade, obviously there's, there's no drop off there.
So, um, I guess I'd like to hear from the applicant first.
Yeah, well, that, that's one of the areas that we wanna, um, come, come with this backhauling and start filling that up, so that, uh, um, these depressions, and, and, you know, you mentioned the one that drops off, that we can fill all that in and get it all graded off, so that, uh, it's, uh, finalized.
I guess, I guess the worry, though, is, you know, there are, there are gigantic, there are very, very, very large piles. And as you're taking down the piles from a structural standpoint, what if one should become structurally not sound, and it should cave in? And I guess the question is, you know, there are folks who are living in very close proximity to it, or somebody could be walking in close proximity to it. You know, what, what are the dangers there?
Well, I think that's one of the reasons that we're talking about the fence, is to, to fence that off and keep people, uh, out of the area. And, and, by the way, I, the stockade fence is not the best looking fence in the world, but I think if you drive through it, and, and there's been some repairs made to it, and, and there certainly can be more. But to me, it looks like a fence that people aren't gonna be climbing over and getting into the site on. And, and a lot of it has been repaired over the last, uh, couple of weeks.
I'd say it was out there a week and a half ago, and there was, I mean, you could, you, a kid could go through in many different areas that I saw. Are you guys screening loam for other jobs out there?
No.
That's only for this site?
Yep.
Not Section Six or anything like that, it's just-
Well, we have, I mean, we'll be looming the, uh, as we finish the-
So you're, you're using that one basically for the other phases, that's kind of where you're screening the loam, bringing it back over there?
Yeah, that's where- Well, on, for, for the entire site, you know, there's certain places that we have to stockpile material, we can't, uh, um, pile the loam where we're building the, the building.
Right, I understand that, I'm just, just be- because John said you compartmentalize this in a way that it's like, okay, we go here, we go here, but they are kind of connected. And, and so-
Yep, agreed.
I think, I think, yeah, just kind of, for what these guys are saying, it all is kind of together, and, and trying to split it up and say, no, we're just gonna talk about this, it just, I, I guess it's just kind of furthering John Preston's points as far as looking at it as a whole.
Understood, I agree.
Hey, did you have a couple more comments, or?
Um, I'll wait for, I'll wait for you to be done, I sort of wanna, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out a way to move forward with what's going on, but you, you, you go ahead.
Certainly these structures look a lot like all the other ones that have been done there, so I, that's, that's not the part of this site plan review that's probably gonna get a majority of the, uh, the scrutiny here. Um, for me, it, it's been the safety, and I think you guys have heard that reiterated over and over again. The other part was the cleanup effort to the current houses and, and residents that are there.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I, I'd like to see us go a step further and actually clean up the properties in and around this, um, the, the whole development, I think, um, based on what's been in the air, and what's settled on homes, and in window sills, and on decks. We owe it to them to clean, clean the properties if, if we see, um, any of that debris. So I, I, I don't know to what effort that needs to be done, but I, I certainly, and there's some residents here that may, may speak to what they've seen on their property from this construction site.
I think a lot of that's already been done, but probably at the, uh, association's expense, not at the developer's expense. I, I'm just, I don't have any data to support that, though, so we, we could look into that, or they could-
Yep. Uh, the, the other thing that we, we had mentioned last time in, in the meeting, um, and certainly, I'd like to see somehow incorporated still is, um, additional green space. We had talked, um, you know, originally I don't think we anticipated the amount of families that would be here, but there is certainly a lot of families, and it's, it's a very active community, there's a lot of people everywhere, and thi- this is kind of the, still the last chance to add any kind of green space for these people to play or, or be in and around, so I'd still like to somehow see it incorporated. Um, I, I don't know how feasible it is, but, um, certainly where there's a will, there's a way. So that was my other comment. Then on Building Eighty, there's a curb cut. And, and that's just me nitpicking, but there's not that same curb cut on Seventy-Eight on the other side, is that a necessary curb cut, or can that be eliminated?
It's been eliminated.
Oh, it's-
The planes have it, it's not there anymore.
Yeah, there's also a gap in the curb by Eighty-Two, I think that's also a mistake from, uh-
The most recent plans that I just re, that I-
Certainly on my plans.
Have, have no curb cut on Eighty-Two and no curb cut on Eight-
Right, it, it's showing a curb cut, but then it doesn't show it going anywhere, so I think it's just a mistake in the update of the-
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's fine, we're cleaning it up.
Okay, well, that's what we asked.
We'll propose for a fence on, I think, and we will move those too.
Get a detail on this, too, on what this is gonna be.
As far as the six foot fence?
Well, they have a fence now, like a stockade fence, but you're proposing a new fence, and I'm looking for detail on it, I don't see an actual detail of this proposed fence.
I agree. I think the detail was to reuse the fence that was there, and then fill in-
Additional gaps, which-
Was that what the plan was?
I'm here for the applicant.
The, like I said, I think the stockade fence is not that bad, uh, and of course I have a different perspective, maybe, but, uh, I think if we took a walk with, uh, Nat or whoever and went through it, we could figure out where, where you'd like to have it repaired, and we could get that done. The fencing along Queen Isabella, I would suggest is, is more of a, a temporary construction type fence. Chain link that, uh, comes in sections that can be, uh, moved and, uh, uh, as-
Chain link with the, with the tarp, so it's also blocking, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
The way it can be adjusted within the site as the phases are, are, you know, completed.
Yeah.
Yeah. But we, we can add a detail for that.
Alright, um, did you have a few things you wanted to add, Nat?
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying, I'm, I'm trying to, um, just encapsulate a strategy for moving forward, okay? So I think in regard to, to dust and noise and large piles between now and December fifteenth, when, you know, it seems like we're gonna be at a rough grading level, and it's gonna be gone. Um, I think it would be important, as we mentioned, to provide an O and, an, an O and M type plan for us. So, you know, like, again, I think that's important with regard to, if, I, if you could provide that to me as soon as possible?
Sure.
That, that would be very helpful.
Yep.
Um, with regard to the fence, um, I think in fact it's worth taking a walk around the site, and maybe planning board members should join me for the walk, and so we could take a look at it, and then make an assessment at that point, so maybe next week we reach out to try to set up a time for that. Maybe we also wanna take a look at, um, the impact of dust that might be, have blown on adjacent properties and, and think more about how we wanna proceed with that.
Sure.
Okay, so maybe we'll put together some sort of site walk, where we can go out there and do that. With regard, um, again, and I mentioned this before, but I, but I wanna add another part, with regard to construction vehicles that are going in and out. Um, maybe there's a newcomer who comes into the development and doesn't understand what's going on, is it possible to put up a sign?
Yes.
When, when you enter that says construction zone? Or on the streets that will be trafficked by, with construction vehicles, construction zone, you know- Or on the streets that will be trafficked by, with construction vehicles, construction zone, you know, steer clear. You know, something to this effect. That's very clear to see. I think that's important.
Excuse me, if I could, Nat, maybe we just got done doing, requiring an O and M plan, which included safety signage, included dust control, noise control, and it included notice to any buyers about an ongoing, so if you can provide that plan to the board for its consideration, that would be great.
Perfect, okay, okay. And the other thing, so I had two questions, so. So we have a situation then where, you know, there were these large piles and these rocks. What led to this, to this material being stored here? And the reason why I'm asking the question is because we have another open space and, you know, moving forward, I wanna be sure that we don't have this condition next open space. I'm just curious to know how this site came to be. Why were there these huge piles of dirt there? Why were there, why was there this rock crushing there? I'm sure it's, a lot of it's part of the construction process that had to take place, but can you talk to that a little bit?
Well, you know, the property had, for over a hundred years, was a sand and gravel pit and a concrete plant. So there's all kinds of material and in fact, the concrete blocks are, when Rosenfeld operated it, they would come back with whatever backwash they had from the trucks and rather than just wash it out, they would fill up these forms and they built those walls with the block. And they used to use it and they used to sell them to people that would use them for retaining walls. So there's, and there was a large, as I mentioned, a large wash plant there in addition to the concrete plant with the lagoons where all this material was washed out into. So all of those things ended up with a lot of stockpiles, concrete blocks, a lot of silt that is just not usable for construction purposes.
But in regard to the heights of the piles, those piles were piles that you made over time?
I mean, as we built out the job, we've been.
You kept piling it up?
The same with the loom. Ends up being concentrated in, you know, in one area. Quite frankly, the area that would be the last to be built upon.
Okay. And the one other thing I wanted to say was in regard to that punch list, that was in regard to bond items. So we still have some outstanding bonds and so the list was in regard to that.
Right. Oh, there's no question, there's more work to be done. But I think the big milestone that we had last year was to get the finish on America Boulevard up to a certain station and then the remainder, which is what I think most of, there's punch on that section, there's no question about that. But most of the bond, I think, is related, or the two bonds are related to the remaining finish that has to be done, which is keyed into the, I'm pretty sure it's the last occupancy permit in the current phase.
So maybe you and I can sit down, we'll take a look at the items, we'll talk about it.
Sure.
Okay, all right.
Right. So, since we have a couple residents here, I'll give, if you have a quick five-minute or less statement, certainly I wanna give you an opportunity. Can we just keep it short, make sure it's something new to the plan that maybe we haven't discussed? And then we'll pick a date to continue this hearing?
My name's Dominic Lewone. I live at four Queen Isabella Way, Phase Six. And I will say, I have seen some positive changes in the last, since the last meeting with the piles and what's going on up there. So I'm happy to see that. Phase Six has come along quickly, quickly in the last year. I think I was the first building. And they do move quick, that I will say. My question is, when will this fence be put up on Queen Isabella? I mean, there's a lot of construction going on now, big piles, and it's in and out of there. And I understand that it's tough for them to navigate with a fence.
Okay, that's it.
But when will you come through this direction and seal off that direction? December fifteenth or before that? Other than that, the fence should have a top on it to try to maintain some of the dust. I have seen sprinklers and I have seen a street sweeper out there daily, which is a good thing. My biggest concern is, when this construction's done, this stormwater basin, it was designed for all this construction. It's been taxed with all this silt with major construction for ten, fifteen years maybe. My concern is that being transferred over to the condo association without being dredged and cleaned out, so to speak, to have as new condition before we take over.
I'm having that basin evaluated by our peer reviewer so that we can understand its state.
Okay. With that said.
Make it part of the plan to have it cleaned out.
I mean, it would have to be inspected before they would, you know, the state would come in. But if it's marginal and in eight years they come in and say, hey, we need this dredged, condo association's not gonna be happy with all this major construction that's been filling it up. I live right there, I see the color change. I understand what it's doing. Washout goes there before it goes in the city streets. It's like a filter. I get that. But it's pretty major construction since that's been built. So I would like a condition that after Phase Seven, that it's mandated to clean that out and have as new before it's turned over to condos association. That's all. Thank you.
I think we're in favor of that.
Do you want the answer about when the fence is gonna go up? And when he's gonna stop using the.
If you know it off the top of your head, yeah, absolutely.
You know, I think the question of going forward with the backhauling is one that's important that, you know, we get a resolution on that. So I would say as long as we can continue to operate that, we would get that up within a week and be coming in off Chestnut Street.
Within a week from today or a week from December fifteenth?
Oh, no, before December fifteenth, within a week from today or tomorrow, whatever.
I would recommend with regard to the backhauling, that they go forward and just get it done with so that they can rough grade it, as long as it's done by December fifteenth. Be my recommendation. What? Are they doing anything right now? The only thing they're doing, okay, so there was, there's an agreement to have it roughly graded, okay? And the deadline for that is far past. I've brought this to their attention. And so they're working very hard to get this done by December fifteenth. And so now if you go there, you'll see trucks and trucks and trucks taking material out. At one point, there were trucks taking material in to bring in a different kind of material to roughly grade it. I said to stop bringing the trucks in until we, you know, came to grips on what's going on. But I think it would be reasonable to have those trucks coming in to finish that job as long as it would be finished by December fifteenth.
Agreed.
So no later than December fifteenth, hopefully much sooner?
Oh, yeah.
But you want much, anything coming in there without the purge control?
Be clear, he wants to know when that fence is gonna go up.
Yeah.
He said that fence is gonna go up within a week from today.
That's what I was waiting to hear.
Well, we don't wanna slow down, but the December fifteenth deadline. Balancing that.
Yeah, you gotta, we don't wanna make it a huge mess for all you guys, so.
And then the other question with regard to the basin, you know, as, and it's not the board's necessarily requirement, but to get a certificate of compliance from conservation, they'll certainly require us to get that to a pristine condition before, before we're off the hook and can turn it over to the condominium association. And as I mentioned last meeting, there's a master association that all the different associations are part of that maintains or will maintain the roads as well as the basin.
Thank you. Is there one more comment? Keep it brief. Just the facts.
I actually wasn't planning to talk. I was just gonna come listen. Judith Margulies, I am a resident of the area, but I'm not a property owner and I'm here to speak only as an individual, even though I'm on the Board of Health. Just to give a point of reference, I actually am and this area is where I, my vantage point is. So you had a opinion from the other area from the other vantage point. First, I wanna say I appreciate all your comments and all your work. I mean, this is a lot of work. I know I'm coming really late to this game, so there were a couple things just generally about this site plan. The open space area and the fact that these are being marketed as three bedrooms, but actually you could use them as four bedrooms because there's another room on a lower level that could be. But they're actively marketed as an option of two or three bedrooms. There are lots of children here. The road, and I'm gonna walk over there away from them, but the way the traffic pattern is, the way the traffic pattern is right now?
Literally, this is where everyone's going. So everyone would be coming out here most likely. To some extent, people may travel that way. This traffic pattern could potentially bring, so.
I just wanted people to consider where the traffic flow is. Right now, there's three hundred condos already there. So this is a lot of people, lots of potential cars because of that traffic pattern. And tons of, the other point I wanted to make is that this is a low area, so visually, it is very visual from here. Whatever people have to look at, they see lots. So including the fence kind of thing, trees. I mean, if you're putting, eventually gonna put the trees there, grass it around that walkway, have a fifteen buffer for, because that fence that's being worked on is visually quite ugly. The other one's gonna be visually quite ugly. People use those walkways daily. I see infants and carriages walk, walking right along that fence that we're talking about being constructed. I don't wanna go, I'm going to probably email Nat my notes here because as we were talking, lots of things came up, but I really wanted to kind of emphasize one thing. We keep hearing about this being a hundred-year-old sand and gravel operation. And we're talking about dust, but we're talking about concrete dust. Concrete dust exposure is a very, very serious health hazard, very serious health hazard. I can tell you what's on my deck right now, although it's been rained on time after time after time. I haven't gone out to clean because I actually have the stuff all over the side of the building and the windows are all film covered. So I'm just kind of waiting for some good rains for some of that to drip off. I've called to ask if I could actually get a waiver from the water ban so I could get a hose out there and wash, but that's not an option right now unless there was one option. But what's on my deck right now looks like more of a hardened kind of concrete kind of soil. It's not dirt. It's white, it's firm. And I'm extremely concerned about the environmental piece of that and all of these children and adults who walk around and are not aware of what is blowing. And one last question, I'm kind of interested, when you're talking about loving lists, are you, is the anticipation, all of these tall mountains will be gone? Because originally before, I wanna say early, late, in the springtime, there appeared, I think, to be one major rocky gravelly kind of thing and now there's all these other things. So I would hope that in the future, there's no pile that's higher than six feet, you know, that, because you can't control that. I look out my window and honestly, the one that's forty-ish feet, I'm calling it forty feet, that's dry all the time. I mean, it's constantly dry. That's why I mentioned I have a different vantage point. And it appears to collapse, be collapsing or moving from a daily basis. The indentations in it are different. So those are the major things. The rest I'll throw kind of in an email to Nat. Unless you have any questions.
How are we? Also.
Good, you can continue.
Thank you.
I actually called because there was a noisy truck with construction debris parked a point on America Boulevard. The police officer who ended up responding, it was between one and two in the afternoon. The police officer responded after I saw it for probably about forty minutes. It was just sitting there idling noisily. It was a recycle, it was labeled recyclables, a green kind of truck, Taunton, Massachusetts. I actually have a photo of it. But coming out of the top was construction debris. It was pretty obvious it was now recyclables. The police officer who responded after I called, left the scene. I called back and asked why, that the truck was still sitting there idling. And I was given some information that we don't really have an effective way to control for the police to respond to noise complaints. So I think all of that needs to be also in the discussion.
I believe we also have a idling bylaw in Ashland that they can be fined for idling for more than five minutes. I know at one point there was a utility vehicle parked in front of my house that was idling very loudly and I went out and politely told them that and they shut their vehicle off.
I actually, when I called back, 'cause there's somebody, I was told, well, I should have, I should have told them when I made the call that it was idling. I have to say, I probably did, but, you know, but yes. But we need, that's a bigger discussion, so.
There are some enforcement issues on the town side that need to be addressed.
Right, right. And I don't think it's not because people aren't well-intended, it's just that we need discussions.
Excellent. Thank you for your feedback. All right. So I think our next meeting's December tenth.
December tenth?
So we'll put you on the schedule for our next meeting and. Don't think so. Thank you. Thank you for offering. Yeah, do you wanna, I think we're just starting to fill up the agenda, right? So we can go seven thirty?
Yeah, tenth we can do seven thirty.
Is that good or bad?
Does that sound like a good time to you?
I wanted to set my alarm to wake up and come. PM, 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 PM. Yeah, still.
Seven fifteen?
I'd rather seven thirty, just so, in case we can slide, yeah, I'm sure we'll come up there, we need to slide in.
I also wanna put together a date and time when maybe a couple of you can come out for a walk. And maybe Jim can join us out there and we could take a look at the fence and we could take a look at some budding properties and have a conversation about it.
So maybe we can use Google Docs or send some kind of email around and kind of get some availability. Obviously, just reply to Nat and we'll.
I will, all right, I guess.
We have to probably post a site plan walkthrough?
No, just some, you can't deliberate.
Okay.
Typically, I would say as long as we're all at the same table, I would ask that we do it now, but in light of the time, we'll just do it.
Right now?
On Google Docs.
Oh, I tell you, go do the site walk. You gotta be kidding me.
I'm hardcore.
We know I'm limping around, right? You're gonna push me to?
I'm sorry, thanks to entering daylight wasting time, it's too dark to do it now.
I just, I'd say shoot out three dates and we'll just pick one.
All right.
Or two, you know, I just don't know my schedule off the top of my head and. I would say sooner rather than later.
Sounds good.
All right, perfect. Yep, is there anything else from the council or Karen or Nat?
Now, ten forty-nine, I move to adjourn.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Thank you.